One, two, three.
We have four.
Okay, great. So we're going to call the meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. We are starting at 5:03.
Dr. Harden?
Here.
Kimberly Kenny? Chair of San Bailey? Patrice Marshall Mackenzie? Dr. Yarma Velazquez?
Present.
Nina Frederick?
Here.
Jennifer Holy?
Here.
Dr. Elizabeth Blanco?
Here.
Addie Wick?
Here. Is it Ms. Wick is Addie or Adeline?
Addie is fine.
Okay, great. All right, so Item B, Resolutions. We have approval of Resolution 2832, Attendance Awareness by Dr. Reynosa.
Good afternoon. I'm going to have this wonderful resolution read by my amazing colleagues, Mr. Brian Stanley and Mr. Paul Michael Dalton.
Good evening. So I'm here alongside Paul Michael Dalton from Child Offering Attendance, and we're here to bring forward Resolution 2832, Recognizing September as Attendance Awareness Month. We know that education is a foundation for a bright future, and one of its simplest, most powerful factors in a student's success is consistent school attendance. When students show up to school regularly -- I'm sorry. Show up regularly, they not only gain academic knowledge but also build social, emotional, and life skills that carry with them into adulthood. But the reality is that chronic absenteeism, missing 10% or more of the school year, can put students at serious risk. It can start as early as kindergarten, making it harder for children to read on grade level by third grade. And as students get older, missing too much school increases the chances of falling behind, struggling emotionally, and even dropping out before graduation. We firmly believe that consistent and meaningful attendance is essential, pillar in creating an inclusive and equitable learning environment, one that fosters strong relationships, amplifies engagement, provides access to crucial resources, and nurtures continuous learning. So these beliefs are embodied in our district-wide Attendance Awareness Campaign, which in September will kick off its third year of this campaign. This campaign, themed "Showing Up Matters for Real," R-E-A-L, is a call to action aimed at raising awareness and inspiring collaboration between all of our learning partners. REAL stands for Building Relationships, Increasing Engagement, Access to Resources, and Support for Learning.
As we move into September, Pasadena Unified is doubling down its efforts to support our schools in promoting attendance. Each site has been provided tools to spread the message through fun, engaging activities that recognize and celebrate student attendance. At the district level, we are offering professional development on supporting attendance through multi-tiered supports, strategies to identify and support struggling families, one-on-one guidance for school attendance teams, and a district-wide student poster contest where students can express what showing up means to them personally. These supports are designed to ensure that schools are well-equipped to welcome students, nurture their growth, and keep them connected to learning. The importance of this work is underscored by the fact that many of our POSD families were directly affected by the fire this year. Some students were unable to attend school regularly due to temporary housing, transportation challenges, or the emotional toll of the crisis. This experience makes it clear that attendance is not just about academics but about stability and recovery. Schools provide trusted adults supportive peers, meals, resources, and a sense of normalcy, all of which are essential for students who are experiencing disruption. By prioritizing attendance now, we are helping students heal, reconnect, and move forward. This resolution affirms our collective commitment to ensuring every child is present, engaged, and supported. We respectfully ask the board to approve Resolution 2832 proclaiming September as Attendance Awareness Month in Pasadena Unified School District and to join us in pledging unwavering support for creating inclusive, equitable learning environments where every student can show up, succeed, and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have anything to say about this? Ms. Harden?
Would move approval.
Second. Okay, let's have a vote.
Addie Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Harden?
Yes.
Kimberly Kenny? Chair of San Bailey? Patrice Marshall Mackenzie?
Yes.
Dr. Yarma Velazquez?
Yes.
Nina Frederick?
Yes.
Jennifer Holy?
Yes.
Thank you for coming again. I know you both were here last time, so thank you.
Okay, next item is approval of Resolution 2835, Hispanic Heritage Month with Dr. Elisa Perez and the Madison students.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Elisa Perez. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Elisa Perez, and I'm the proud principal at Madison Elementary School. And I have my esteemed colleague with me here, Mr. Martín Dorado. I'm so honored to be here to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month and our Latinx and Indigenous roots. At Madison Elementary, we are so blessed and honored to serve such a diverse community. The reality is that many of our students at Madison come from various backgrounds. Many of our students are from El Salvador, Ecuador, Honduras, Nicaragua, Guatemala, Mexico, and so many other beautiful places. At Madison, many of our students speak multiple languages, including English, Spanish, Nahuatl, and many more other languages. At Madison, we take pride in fostering a love and passion of where folks come from. Throughout the last few years, we've been able to capitalize on the cultural wealth our students bring and have an awesome Folclorico, Mariachi, and Zumba program. The truth is that it's an honor to celebrate our community and students, not only during Hispanic Heritage Month, but all year long.
I wanted to briefly highlight two of the considerations in the resolution. The first, whereas Hispanic Latino-Americans alongside those of Indigenous and Afro-descendant heritage are justly proud of their rich and varied cultural heritage, which has made numerous social, artistic, linguistic, and intellectual contributions to our society. And so I wanted to highlight the everyday contributions that our multicultural students offer our classrooms, because these kids are truly rich in what they bring with them to school. To me, one of the worthwhile aspects of teaching is closely examining literature through the eyes of our students, because embedded in their analysis is an expression of their experiences and their cultural stories. Thus, in our class, we have a rich tradition of treating our books as windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors. The other consideration, whereas this community and state of California thereby owe a great debt to the Hispanic/Latino culture as well as to the Indigenous and Afro-descendant populations who have been integral to the cultural and historical fabric of Latin America, which constitutes the foundation of the history of our region. And therefore, in the classroom, it is important that we indeed honor the stories our students carry with them and center our teachings on them. And when we do in a formal setting such as public education, it is evident that students better connect with their country, this, the United States of America. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Pasadena Unified School District does hereby recognize the month of September 15th to October 15th, 2025, as Hispanic Heritage Month, directing all schools to utilize local and historical resources and curriculum to engage in meaningful instruction, learning opportunities, and activities in commemoration of this occasion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have a comment? Motion? Okay. Dr. Velazquez?
Yes. Thank you for this resolution and for acknowledging the diverse cultural contributions of our Hispanics, Latinos, Indigenous, and Afro-descendant communities. It is important that we take this time to honor history and identities of the families we serve, and as we reflect on the contributions of Hispanic, Indigenous, and Afro-descendant peoples, let us also remember that migration is not something to fear but something to honor. Here in Pasadena Unified, we commit to ensuring that every child and every family, no matter where they began their journey, feel safe, included, and celebrated. And in doing so, we continue the long tradition of making the United States a nation of shared hope and shared future. But I want to use this opportunity to speak of the fear many of our families face due to immigration enforcement. For POSD, celebrating heritage also means committing to their safety. And I am calling for our district to expand safe access to school events, including hybrid participation for parents that may not feel safe attending in person. No family should be excluded from our back-to-school events, parent teacher conference, or celebrations because of fear. If we are serious about honoring our communities, then we must provide alternative accommodations that ensure families feel truly welcomed and respected in their relationship with our district, and clear and sufficient safety measures on all campuses that draw a firm line between private and public spaces, so that families and students can feel secure when our students are inside our campuses. Regrettably, we have not yet fully accomplished this goal for the '25-'26 academic year, but let's not stand -- not allow this resolution stand alone as a symbolic recognition. Instead, let's come back with a renewed commitment to address this gap, correct them, make structural and cultural changes needed, and ensure the promise of public education is fully realized for every student and every family in POSD. Que viva la causa!
Ms. Fredericks?
I echo a lot of the points that Dr. Velazquez made. I do want to make sure that this isn't just, like she said, a symbolic resolution. There are a lot of challenges, new challenges every day, and I want to make sure that our community feels that they're not alone. There's forces that are constantly changing every day, and we also have to change and improve with those changes. So I want to make sure that we are together in this. It's not just, you know, a holiday or, you know, a specific month. So thank you, Dr. Perez, for continuing to come and celebrate with us. And Mr. Dorado, always there as well. So I support this resolution and any authentic actions that are in the spirit of the resolution.
Mr. Harden?
So here, here. I think, and I also thank our wonderful administration and staff from Madison for being here. Thank you. Dr. Perez and Mr. Dorado for being here with us. And then I would simply add to what my colleagues have said in terms of protecting mental health of the children that are having to go through this uncertainty at school and making sure that we do everything we can do to be there for them. This, we know, is a terrifying time and an uncertain time, and the fact that we have to shelter in place from our own government is, well, that's really something. So that's what I wanted to say.
Do I get a motion? I did not hear a motion.
So moved.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, vote? Okay.
Dr. Bernadette Addie Wick?
Yes.
Dr. Harden?
Yes.
Kimberly Kenny?
Yes.
Chair of San Bailey? Patrice Marshall Mackenzie?
Yes.
Dr. Yarma Velazquez?
Yes.
Nina Frederick?
Yes.
Jennifer Holy?
Yes.
Here.
And public comment on closed session agenda? No, none, okay. You're telling me no. I'm like, wait. Okay. So there's no public comment for closed session agenda, so we will recess at 5:19 to close. See you later. See you later.
I thank you all for being here. I'm going to do the public announcement of closed session items. Concerning item D1, case number 2025040158, by a vote of seven to zero, the board took action to approve of the settlement of special education litigation in accordance with the terms of a written agreement. Concerning item D2, case number 944155, by a vote of seven to zero, the board took action to approve of the settlement of special education litigation in accordance with the terms of a written agreement. Concerning item D3, case number 956402, by a vote of six zero one, the board took action to approve of the settlement of special education litigation in accordance with the terms of a written agreement. Concerning item D4, case number 958246, by a vote of seven to zero, the board took action to approve of the settlement of special education litigation in accordance with the terms of a written agreement. Closed session, agenda item D5. In closed session, the Board of Trustees, the Board, considered Pasadena Unified School District's participation as an amicus in Vasquez-Perdomo-Vernome, case number 254312, Ninth Circuit, July 13, 2025, 25 CV 05605, CD Cal amended comp July 2, 2025. Perdomo. The Perdomo case is on appeal at the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit. Board voted for the Pasadena Unified School District to participate as an amicus and authorize the superintendent or designee to take all actions and execute the necessary documents to initiate the participation by the district. The vote was as follows: seven, eyes, seven, no, zero, abstain, no, absence, abstain, zero, absence, zero. Thank you. So adjournment of closed session. Call to order at six forty-four, forty-one. All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Harden?
Here.
Ms. Kimberly Candy?
Here.
Ms. Charles Richardson Bailey?
Here.
Ms. Patricia MacKenzie?
Here.
Ms. Yama Velazquez?
Present.
Ms. Tina Frederick?
Here.
Ms. Jennifer Holley?
Here.
Ms. Elisa Blanco?
Here.
Ms. Adie Wick?
Here.
Student Board Member, Ms. Wick, would you please say the Pledge of Allegiance for us?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, great.
If I remember it. We'll help you. Okay. Yeah. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we will start with public comments. Three minutes each, please, and remember the three minutes so that everybody has an equal amount of time to talk. Thank you.
The Board of Education acknowledges receipt of public comments via email. These comments will be made part of permanent record of this meeting. First, we have Cloud Morgan Clark, followed by Mayor Victor Gordo, City Council Member Steve Madison.
Sorry. Good evening, Board President Holly, esteemed members of the Board, Superintendent Blanco, and Superintendent's Leadership Team. My name is Cloud Morgan Clark. It's my honor and privilege to represent the Thurgood Marshall School community as a current senior, 12th grade student, in demonstrating our interest and efforts in opposing the bill AB 715. AB 715 will be heard by the Assembly Education Committee in early September next week, and it threatens a dangerous precedent for academic freedom in public education. Despite claiming to prevent hate speech and anti-Semitism, it fails in doing both while giving the state the power to restrict academic speech in public schools for ethnic studies and social sciences teachers. In redefining anti-Semitism to include critical speech of the State of Israel, AB 715 would suppress academic freedom in instruction on the history of the State of Palestine. As a student, I fear that this bill will silence my teachers' abilities to hold nuanced and balanced discussions that highlight a diverse range of voices and to authentically teach the subject of ethnic studies without fear of state repercussions. We've seen when states such as Texas allow the state interfere in public education and censor LGBTQ voices. I believe that this bill threatens academic freedom in a very similar way. I'm a queer student of Jewish heritage, and I care very deeply about keeping all students free from discrimination, but that's not the true purpose of AB 715. It undermines the too often thankless labor of some of the most influential people in my education. Trust in educators to navigate these extremely difficult and nuanced conversations is very important, and AB 715 shatters that trust. AB 715 is right out of the Heritage Foundation's Project Esther's playbook, which is a companion to Project 2025 that is designed to dismantle pro-Palestinian advocacy through false weaponization of anti-Semitism. It has a lot of ludicrous inclusions, like redefining nationality to include a social organization where collective identity has emerged, but experts like the ACLU say that this could allow Christian white nationalists to claim that speech about chattel slavery or the Japanese internment camps is hate speech towards their white identity as heritage from the United States. I don't feel that my education and history ought to be determined by the state's political goals. Over 80 organizations, including the ACLU, California Teachers Association, you to write a letter of condemnation to the Assembly Education Committee in advance of their hearing next week. Thank you very much for your time and continued support of our school community.
Mayor Gordo?
Thank you, and good evening, Madam President, Madam Superintendent, members of the Board, Ms. Wick. That was a terrific rendition of the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Let me say that I'm here in my capacity as mayor. It's an honor and a privilege that I am mayor of this great city, but the impacts of, and I'm speaking to L3, the impacts of essentially disposing of a property without first having had discussions, open discussions with your partners, us, the city of Pasadena, including residents of Pasadena, is something that I could not simply go without comment from me. I'm a graduate of this school district, elementary, middle school, high school, went on to Pasadena City College, and so I know the value of education right here in our community, public education. And I also know the value of our neighborhoods, because I once delivered the Pasadena Star News in our neighborhoods. And I know that disposing of, even if it's through a long-term lease or through an RFP, an opportunity for education in West Pasadena is going to have lasting impact. And let me tell you what that impact will be. You know, sure enough, the law of unintended consequences. I've always objected to the sale or disposition of school district assets, because they're community assets. They don't belong to a school district. They belong to the people of Pasadena, to the people of Sierra Madre, and to the people of Altadena. And when you dispose of any property, particularly a school property, you have a responsibility to engage with that community. And I don't know that that's occurred. I'm not aware of that occurring. The message of the unintended consequence piece comes here. The message that is being sent to people of Pasadena, and I'm not suggesting you're sending that message, but this is a message that some will see, is that we are giving up on public education in this part of our city, and maybe elsewhere, that the majority of kids who live in this community and attend either parochial school or some sort of private school will not have a place to come back when they want to and choose to, and that is unacceptable. I ask that you hold L3 until we have that conversation, and I ask that we engage with the community and that we have a thoughtful conversation as a city council and as a school board about the future of assets that belong to the people of Pasadena, Sierra Madre, and Altadena. Thank you.
Council members. Council Member Steve Madison?
Thank you very much, President Holly and distinguished Board Members. It's an honor for me as well to be here. As you know, I'm a longtime city council member representing West Pasadena, where two of your school sites are located, San Rafael Elementary, which we fought to keep open some 10 or more years ago when there was a seismic issue there, and Linda Vista School, which is on your agenda tonight on L3, and I'm here to speak about that as well. I want to echo the mayor. I think both of your students are way more articulate than I was at their age, so kudos to both of you. You know, we have a long and deep relationship with the PUSD in West Pasadena, and I would cite as examples the history when we had six elementary schools in my city council district, and over time, for reasons beyond any of our control, that's now come to the place where we have the two school sites and only one open school, public school at San Rafael. Time and time again, West Pasadena, and I personally, and politically, and officially, have supported the efforts of the district, going back to our sales tax initiative in 2018, measures I and J, which provided for three-quarters of a cent increase in sales tax, and an advisory measure that would provide funding directly from the city to the schools using that revenue. I was initially agnostic at best on that, because a fundamental principle for me is that if I'm going to take money from my taxpayers, my constituents, I need to be accountable directly for how that money is spent. And of course, transferring it to another organization, even one with as close a relationship as the district, separates me from that accountability and that oversight. But I strongly supported those initiatives, because it was the right thing to do for our schools, and increasingly, other communities were doing the same thing, providing direct financial support. This year, I'm told, it'll exceed $11 million in that sales tax initiative. We supported, and I personally supported, both of your bond measures, Measure O in 2020, which kicked off the modernization effort, over $500 million in property taxes, and then just last fall, Measure R, which was a $900 million property tax. And certainly, I was one of many, but our district overwhelmingly supported those measures, even though arguably, our district may be more affected in terms of the value of those taxes on their parcels, because we're so fortunate in West Pasadena. And what I'm here tonight to ask you to do, please, is to table this and give us an opportunity, and I, like the mayor, I don't know the details, but I do know that our staff has not had an opportunity to dialogue with your staff and come up with solutions that might be mutually beneficial and avoid the real potential storm that could ensue if you simply charged down a development path. This community is very fired up about the school. They care deeply about the school and the park that's been located there for some 20 years, and thank you for that under that joint use arrangement. We have a preschool that's been there for many years as well, that's very important to the community. So I'd like our staffs, and again, I don't know, not here to point the finger or blame, but I know that our staffs have not had a chance to sit down and communicate. Are there ways the city can invest in this site? Are there ways that we can make the park a permanent part of the city's park portfolio? Are there other avenues that we can pursue? So, that's my request. I think it's a modest one. This issue's been kicking around for 20 years or so in terms of this particular school site, and I know so many others. And so I would respectfully request that you do that and give us a short amount of time to be able to talk and see if there's a constructive, coordinated solution that we can work on together. And in closing, I do have to step away to go to a vigil at a car wash in my district, where seven hard-working, law-abiding immigrants were kidnapped by ICE just this short time ago. I thank you for filing an amicus brief in the Perdomo case. We have won a temporary restraining order in that regard, and we intend to enforce it, including with regard to that raid at the car wash on Del Mar. I know you just have kicked off the Roosevelt project for the district in terms of developing property, and I think that's another factor that I'd ask you respectfully to consider, is whether you could take a beat, let us have that dialogue, and then also see how, undoubtedly, there will be lessons learned at the Roosevelt site that would benefit all of us on other side. I know I've gone over my time, and I really appreciate your service and the time. Thank you.
So Ms. Wick, student Board Member, report.
Thank you, President Holly, esteemed Board Members, and Superintendent Blanco, for your dedication and ongoing support of the Pasadena Unified School District and student leadership. We're all very excited to be back at school reconnecting with teachers and friends. We'd like to begin by reflecting on the recent press conference held by PUSD alongside Pasadena's mayor and state and city representatives regarding student safety on campus with ICE law enforcement in the area. We heard very powerful and moving speeches from figures such as Mayor Victor Gordo and Council Member Sasha Renee Perez about the importance of ensuring safety in our community and in our classrooms. Their words reminded us of our constant support in our community and the responsibility we share to protect one another. The Student Assembly Council, as well as the think tank, strongly condemns the acts of ICE and our government infringing on the rights of its own people. No student should ever feel unsafe on campus or fear that their education could put themselves or their family at risk. Our schools and communities should remain a safe space to learn, grow, and gain a sense of belonging. We will always prioritize student safety and the overall well-being of our community. We'd also like to talk about the recent tragic shooting at Annunciation Catholic School. We extend our deepest solidarity and condolences to the family and children affected by this shooting. As students, we greatly appreciate the reassurance and resources provided by Superintendent Dr. Blanco, shared through district communication. As we return to our campuses, students are starting to warm up to the new cell phone policy. While it may take some time to fully adjust, we plan to gather more feedback from the student body later on in the year to better understand the policy and how it's impacting learning across PUSD. We'd like to reiterate our appreciation for the Board's leadership by supporting the most vulnerable members of our community at this time. Your dedication to student safety and academic success does not go unnoticed. As we continue returning to our campuses, we hope that students can continue to learn, grow, and feel that sense of belonging at school. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will move to item J, comments from labor unions. Do we have any labor unions here? Okay, good.
Good evening. I guess Dr. Blanco's not in here, but members of the Board, she'll be right back. So welcome, welcome back to school. We've been here a couple weeks now. I will bring it to your attention that unfortunately, there's been no certificated vacancy list sent out to our membership since May 30th. Despite that, you've hired 60 individuals, so not a great start to the year in that respect. There's also two Level 3 grievances that started over the summer. The churn, these 60 that we've hired, I'm very, I've been happy to meet them, excited to meet them, but the fact that we laid off 100 people in order to hire back a bunch of those and then 60 more, it just is a constant pattern of churn that is a waste of funds, of human capital, and ultimately, it causes us to lose students and families. On a better note, the science pilot has started up, at least the conversations about inviting six through 12 folks. We had a completely online program, and so I know that those science teachers are really happy to be invited to look at books, actual textbooks, which will be a much improved product. The PLCs are starting up soon. This will, again, remind everyone, is a teacher-driven collaboration time with support from coaches. It started differently, and that's just kind of how the process was meant to be, but now it should be fully teacher-driven. While students enjoy art, music, and PE, teachers are going to be reflecting, which is really critical, of course, for our craft, planning, and working to improve their own practice, and working with parents as well as other folks, their peers. I've brought this up a few times, but I want to keep it on everyone's radar, that LCAP's most successful strategies in closing achievement gaps and academic outcomes, and that's the only study I can find that actually even looks at LCFF trends, but it is very clear that these are the top three: class size reduction, increasing teacher pay, ultimately, teacher retention, which I'll point you back to our previous slide that was showing how we have been kicking out teachers. It's important to keep that in mind. And also, a little bit less effective, but obviously needed, is access to guidance counselors, health services, and funding quality PD. So these are the things across the state that have been most effective at closing achievement gaps. For us to not be prioritizing these, any of these, in our LCAP is not great. So, the top three, anyway. I think we have counselors in there, and maybe something about health services and PD, but we have not tapped or even considered the top three. On the business side, we continue to publish a budget that says that we have over 200 administrators. I'll point you to the fact that we have 50 at the district office and only 36 at our school sites, so that's interesting. Why would we have more administrators? I know this is actually true. We have more administrators at district office than we have at the school sites. The other question is, what are the other 114-plus? Why are there more admin? Yeah. And then ultimately, why is just over 40% of our school district budget being spent on classroom instruction when the legal minimum is 55%? In addition, we have $100 million budgeted to spend on outside contractors without adequate safeguards. So what is the money for? What outcomes should we expect from these? Are we confident that the Burbank scandal will not happen here? Amongst other things, we need a clear nepotism policy in our district, and I hope that you will be working on one soon. To show you a graph of how this classroom defunding has been snowballing and how teachers and aides are getting cut first, 2023, we were spending less than we needed to in the classroom. 22, 23, 24, it got worse. Last year, it got almost $30 million that we were underfunding our classrooms, and this budget has us at about $49 million underwater. We're spending $49 million less than the state minimum on classroom instruction. Some of the takeaways: We need to treasure the classroom. We need to cut central and contract bloat. PUSD optimizing will mean listening to parents, teachers, community, and students about the needs and assets. I know we have a lot of streams in progress to cut, and I hope that we will be keeping front and center that we are over on the number of central office administrators, as well as we're spending way too much on contracts, and we do not know what we're supposed to be getting out of them. Thank you.
Do we have any other labor partners here? I don't think so. Not seeing any. They're not jumping up. Okay, we're going to move on to K, Staff Presentation. Fiscal stabilization process, Mr. Bravo Karimi.
So, we've spoken for the last several months, over a year, about the very substantial financial challenges that the district is facing. There's a confluence of reasons for why districts like ours and districts really statewide are facing such a difficult financial outlook. Like many districts across the state, we have had declining enrollment for a very long time, fewer students each year than we had the year before. We've also had the recent expiration of a substantial investment by the federal government in our schools. Those were one-time funds. They were put to very important use to mitigate the impact of the pandemic, and those funds have expired. They've been fully spent. We should not expect to receive any additional funds of that type from the federal government. Additionally, we've had substantial increases in our costs for things like insurance or things that show up as contract spending, but they're to properly insure against things like a fire. We've also had increasing costs of employee health benefits, benefits that employees at PUSD pay a fixed dollar amount for their benefits. So every year where benefits increase substantially, the district bears that full cost. So, we're not alone in facing this challenge, but it is a very serious challenge, and that's why we've, unfortunately, you know, we were facing even after the fire, very difficult decisions, and we made a significant progress in our path towards fiscal sustainability, but more is necessary. And so tonight, I'm just going to give a quick update on some processes that are going to play out over the coming months to address this very serious financial problem. So, many work streams, as we say, you know, everything has to be on the table. There can be no sacred cows, and here are some of the work streams. So first, again, as we did last year, we have a Superintendent Budget Advisory Committee. That Budget Advisory Committee included labor partners. That budget advisory committee included labor partners, it included parents, it included members of the community, of course, school administrators. And so that broad group of stakeholders helped us identify and prioritize areas where the district would reduce. And so we're going to reconvene that same committee over the next coming months. An additional area of focus for us is special education. We, of course, always need to meet and must meet the needs of our students with disabilities, but we always want to make sure that we're doing it in the most efficient way possible, and so that's another area of focus for the district. Grant maximization is making sure we're making the best use of all of our restricted grants. That's another important area. Central office reductions, although we made very substantial reductions to the central office from last year into the current school year, we know that we'll need to make more. Contracts, always, those were part of the central office reductions that were made last year, but it's always important to continue to look at the contracts that are important. I do want to take a moment to mention the vast majority of our contracts are for special education. Those that are not for special education, the big buckets are utilities, things like electricity, water, waste management, the insurance that I mentioned a moment ago that covers us for property losses. So these are very, very important, and I also should mention that the expenses that we incurred due to the fire are primarily in contracts. And so during the 24, 25 school year, again, in 25, 26, we are not done recovering from the fire. A very, very substantial amount of the amount of funds spent on contracted services were to clean our schools, to test them environmentally, and so millions of dollars have been spent towards those efforts. Another area of focus is transportation. Obviously, that is heavily linked to special education, but we always want to ensure that we are providing transportation in an efficient manner. And then asset management, which is using the properties of the district to generate important revenue for our students. Now, of course, there's always a community engagement process with any project, there's always involvement by the city from the very beginning, but that is what asset management refers to. And then finally, just always keeping a very close eye on staffing levels and the filling of vacancies. This is just a brief overview of the timeline, so obviously, right now, we are into the end of August. So that superintendent budget advisory committee, those meetings will start in September through October, and it'll result in coming back to the board in November. There'll be two board meetings, the first where we'll provide the results of the prioritization work that the committee has done, as well as other parts of the work streams that I mentioned on the previous slide. So that would happen on November 13th, and then on November 20th, coming to a decision on some of the reductions that will be made for the 26, 27 school year. And then, of course, immediately after that, we need to start implementing. And the reason why it's so important to start implementing early is that we start working on the budget around that time, and so that's why these important decisions for next school year need to start right away. So just want to walk folks through what that exercise will look like at the board level. So again, the committee will prioritize primarily school-based resources, but also other resources district-wide. It'll result in potential reductions being prioritized into three tiers based on impact that those reductions will have on our students and programs. And the board would then approve a sufficient amount of reduction, selecting a sufficient number of reductions from those three tiers to meet our target total reduction. So this is just to give you an idea of how that might look, they're not specific types of reductions, of course, that is to come, but you'll see there'll be reductions tiered, tier one being those that we feel have the largest impact. Again, the committee's going to help us make those determinations. Tier two would be those that have a more moderate impact, and then tier three, lesser impact. Now, to be clear, every reduction will be difficult, every reduction will have an impact, but it's important that we work with the community, with our stakeholders, to prioritize and to identify in which tier these potential reductions should be. And so if we were to reach, in this example, a targeted reduction of $30 million of ongoing cuts, we would select enough reductions to reach the minimum. So in this example, let's say that the board has decided that all of the reductions in that tier three lesser impact would be moving forward, so those total up to $15 million, so we'd be halfway there in this example. Let's say the board further decided to go with options D and E, that's another $10 million for $25 million. And then finally, let's say the board decided to go with option A. So these combination of options, again, in this made-up example, would reach the targeted total. So, that was just, again, I know the board and the community from many, many past presentations is aware of the gravity of the situation, but this is just a quick update on the process moving forward, and I want to mention something that I mentioned at a past meeting. So these, what we're facing is daunting, I don't want to sugarcoat it. It's going to be very difficult, it's going to require us to make very difficult decisions. There will be an opportunity for our important stakeholders, our education partners, to weigh in, but it's important to note that we will continue to educate our students, we will continue to provide them with a high-quality education, to provide them with high-quality programming. It is possible to continue to do that in spite of the difficulties that we're facing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, I'm sure we have some questions here, I do too. So, who would like to go first here? Ms. Fredericks?
Thank you for a really hard, difficult topic. The slide with the large, medium, low impact? You define impact, is that a bad or a good thing, or both?
So, generally speaking, reductions are going to have an impact on our students' programming, on our programming, on our schools. And so what the committee is going to do through their work is be presented with a number of options for reductions, and kind of like they did last year, they're going to provide scoring that'll allow us to rank them in priority order. And so based on that, we'll be able to create those tiers. And so that is how the committee will help us organize these into these relative impact tiers.
So is impact like, like financial impact, or more like programmatic?
Programmatic impact, so the financial impact would be in that third column, showing kind of the value of the cost of the reduction?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question, is it okay if I go next? I have to ask you. So it's something that just really bothers me, because I know that across the state, there are districts going through far worse than we're going through.
That's right.
And I'm feeling the stress on this, and all the reasons are usually the same. It's less birth rate, you know, fewer babies, and a lack of funding for public education in the nation. And that's why we constantly have to go through this. So I just need another clarification on this, because this is something I talk to my constituents about when they ask, why is this happening? If the federal government fully funded IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act, now, this is all taken, we're all general ed here, we, all children are equal, but kids have different needs, we're a diverse species, and we were promised full funding of IDEA in 1975. If then, they haven't done that, they've never spent 40% on our kids. If they had done that, if they did it today, just tell me how different this very difficult process would be?
It would be materially different. The unfunded mandate that you mentioned is very substantial, and the underfunding of those mandates, important mandates, we're talking about services for some of our most vulnerable students. It would make a very material impact.
That's really good to know, because we can never stop fighting for the funds to educate children in this country. Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Kenny? Okay, Dr. Velazquez, you're number three.
I just wanted to clarify a few things. So grant maximization, so that means moving expenditures that we're now using in unrestricted funds into grants, and then having the grants pay for those, and so then, the current use of those grant funds, that service or whatever it's paying for might go away then?
That could be one of the outcomes. There are also, at times, accumulated balances in restricted grants that are not earmarked for any existing uses. There are other, so it could be a combination of the two, yes.
And the question that I'm trying to understand on sped, because I know it was the, I think, second on the work stream, because I've asked if we have a target for reductions in that area, and my concern is maintenance of effort where the federal government, while not giving us the promised percentage, wants to make sure that we don't spend less of our portion in any year than we've spent the prior year. So for us to not spend less, it seems it would be very difficult to make reductions. And so, trying to understand, does that committee have a number in mind? Or how are we approaching that?
So we don't have a set target yet. You're right that it's complicated, given the maintenance of effort that you mentioned, but our trend has been that our spending on special education has gone up each year. Even though we have in total fewer students each year, our spending on special education has gone up. And so, and it's projected to, that trend is projected to continue. So it would still be possible to lower our spending against what we project, while still complying with the maintenance of effort.
So not increase?
Correct.
Not necessarily reduce from whatever our current kind of baseline is, but at least not increase at that rate?
From what we're, correct, from what we're projected to spend in the future, which is part of the problem that is being addressed by these work streams.
And then I just, I know that there was a press release about the superintendent's budget committee, but I'm hoping that we will add to our website the list of the members who are on that committee. My understanding is they're returning from last year, but I think that'd be really helpful for the public to know who are the parents who are on the committee, who are the community members, who are the teachers, who are the other staff, which principals. And then I know I've seen some tentative dates, it sounds like they're meeting every Wednesday from the end, the last Wednesday in September through the last Wednesday in October. So the sooner we can put those dates out, or that calendar, I think, in case there are people for whom this is as interesting as football or other fall pastimes, they may want to... These meetings, my understanding, will be open to the public and will be sharing information so that people can kind of go along and not be surprised at the end.
Yes.
So anything we can post would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Dr. Velazquez?
Hi, so my question is about the timeline. So when are the, can you repeat again the date for the final recommendations from this committee to the board?
Yeah, the first meeting would be on November 13th, and then the second board meeting would be November 20th.
And that's when the recommendations are going to be made to our body, to this body?
Correct, on the 13th, and then the idea would be on the 20th, a week after, to come to some final decisions.
All right, well, thanks very much. The reason why I wanted to ask that, just for context, is because last year, our timeline got really complicated after the regrettable event of the fire, but also because we were a little bit later on, because the information was presented later to us, it was very difficult for us to have the flexibility, and after all, we are accountable for, to the community. So I think that that's an improvement in the process, thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. McKenzie?
Thank you so much. We are certainly in a precarious situation, but I would like to actually take this time to make an appeal to members of the public. Two things. The first is that the state of California funds school districts based on the days that students attend school versus the number of students that are enrolled in school. And even if a student is absent, we lose dollars on those days when students are absent. Those students still have needs when they're not in school. Yet we have finances and costs associated with still serving those students when they're not in school. So I would ask you to reach out to your legislators and urge them to change the way in which we fund public education from average daily attendance to enrollment-based funding. So for every child who's enrolled in a school district, there is a set amount of dollars that come to said district to serve that student. That's my first ask. My second ask is this. As Mr. Bravo Karimi indicated in his presentation, we received an influx of dollars from the federal government to support the needs of students during the pandemic. The needs of the students that were addressed with those dollars have not gone away. If the federal government found the money then, they can find the money now. Your voices are valuable in advocating for those dollars to come back to us. So I urge you to write your member of Congress and advocate for additional dollars to come back to support public education, because it is the better of our democracy, and if we want to have people who grew up to be good humans, good leaders, and are going to inhabit our communities in the future, we have to invest in that future. And I ask you to urge, I urge you all to join me in that advocacy for funding our future.
Ms. Harden?
Thank you for pointing out how the community can advocate, it's spot on. Dr. Velazquez kind of ventured into the territory of my question, and I think the opportunity that the board has to do the prioritization work at the end is important. I think that we have, we identified November 13th as a special board meeting. I would just appeal that that's an opportunity for not only the board to become very informed about the impacts of the choices it has to make, but it's also important, that meeting will be important for the public to be able to understand the work of the Sback and what it's done, and the reasons why the packages were put together and that the way that they were and the guidance that came from them. So I think, you know, I would, I guess my advocacy for that meeting is that essentially, it's a study session for the board, and I'm not sure what process. I know I've heard, you know, that there will be practice exercises that will be introduced to the board so that we can get the hang of the work that we need to do before we have to actually cast our final vote. So I think that's, let's not rush that, that meeting on the 13th, it's important.
Anybody else? Ms. Kenny?
Just to clarify, could Fatima send us a calendar invite so that we put the 13th on our calendars? Because I don't know that we have it booked, and I just want to make sure. It's not on my calendar, at least, so I want to make sure that I don't book something else that would be less important.
All right, so are we, anybody else on fiscal stabilization? We're going to let Mr. Bravo Karimi go back to his seat? Looks like that's what we're going to do, okay. Number two, Special Education Review Implementation Plan, Dr. Chan Hill.
All right, good evening, board and SLT and members of the public. We are excited to be able to share with you a long-awaited presentation that should give you an overview of what our current updates and actions are in the Special Education Department following a special education program review. I'm here tonight joined by members of our team, Director of Special Education, Dr. Ingrid Haimes, our Coordinator of Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services, essentially our significant disproportionality work, Dr. Laura Barba, and some very important individuals who have been lifting up what recommendations are and guiding us through this process, Dr. Trenna Spurlock, and Margaret Ferrugio. So, I wonder if I could get a chair for you? And then while she's not able to be with us tonight, Selber Director Sally Iverson is also deeply involved in the work. So, some context, in the fall of 2023, Dr. Blanco commissioned an internal review of our special education processes, procedures, systems, et cetera. This was not compelled by any compliance, this was a deep intent to improve our own practices as well as our own self-monitoring and evaluation and improvements. This, the intent was to lead to a roadmap, which is what we are able to provide to you tonight. Those recommendations were compiled after extensive focus group work, extensive data review, a significant amount of analysis of documents and other requisite information, and discussion with stakeholders, et cetera. Compiled into one particular review that you did receive in an earlier iteration in, I think, October, I can't even remember what year it is, oh, October 2024. And what we have done since that publication of that report is work on what the actions in our implementation plan would be. So that is what we're here to present tonight. What I want to kind of share is that in that time period, in that same time period, we also had a variety of other plans that were being produced, some due to some compliance concerns and some because of our typical use of department planning. So in 2023, as I noted, we began the Special Education Review as an internal commission. But simultaneously, we also had produced a plan for, for targeted disproportionality. That is essentially a warning that we may become significantly disproportionate. We need to plan ahead and attempt to not have that designation or distinction to correct the disproportionality. In 2024, we actually did become identified as significant disproportionate, significantly disproportionate in that area of, you'll see it at the bottom. And therefore, we are now compelled to produce a more intensive plan. That means that this is all wrapped up together. We are not operating with separate plans. We are moving forward in the next stages of that same work to address that same significant disproportionality. What I also want to share is that what you'll see tonight, and why Dr. Barbara's here tonight, is that that work is also encapsulated and accounted for in the implementation plan that is now attached to the board presentation. So all work streams and all areas of focus and priority and action are wrapped up into one roadmap that we can utilize to tap into as we progress in the improvement. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is to give you an overview of this review, but more specifically, the implementation plan. Therefore, we'll talk about its design, the activities included, the expected outcomes, and then our monitoring and evaluation process. And without further ado, I'd like to invite the architects of that review and those who've been guiding us, Dr. Mildred Brown.
Good evening. We're really pleased to be here tonight to be able to discuss the actual review as well as the implementation plan. This picture is really where we are right now in that we're building the plane and flying at the same time. Certainly, the review and the implementation plan is a roadmap, but we also know it has a lot of bumps, a lot of concerns in regards to changes that we will need to make as we go. So even though we're sharing a roadmap tonight as far as the plan, we know that it's dynamic and can change based on the needs of the district, the needs of the students, and certainly any needs that are, need to be addressed with our families. Oops, I have the clicker. Okay, I was waiting on someone to click. In regards to the plan implementation, we're navigating several different special ed journeys in that many of the staff that are board now were not here when we started the review. So we had to do a lot of catch-up as far as being able to talk about the journey of special ed in the district, as well as looking at all of the new challenges that may be coming up in terms of compliance issues, new edicts from California Department of Ed, as well as new plans, as Helen mentioned earlier. So it's a dynamic plan, it's not stagnant, and we hope to be able to revise it as needed as we go along. The scope of work is, can be, someone said when I shared the implementation plan, that's a lot of work. It is a lot of work. And the premise of being able to tackle it is to talk about what do we need to do now? So it interfaces with our day-to-day work. So it's not on top of what our staff is already doing. So we're intersecting with general ed and special ed. So in fact, there can kind of diminish the idea of silos. And that was one of the things that we were able to discern very quickly when we were doing all of our special ed reviews and classroom visits, that there were two different worlds here in Pasadena. And we're hoping that the ability to be able to intersect and have a lot of collaboration between the special ed and general ed department will be one of the highlights of the implementation of the plan. So, Jenna.
And good evening. Absolutely collaboration, right? When we come together, we had to collaborate on everything. We took a look at so many multiple pieces of information as we designed this plan. We took a look at previous plans, and then we decided, where can we begin to collaborate on what we need to do to make this plan work? Looking at the plan, we decided on that, it was designed to promote several things. First of all, support. And that support, positive relationships with students and families, number one. Who do we serve? Students and families, right? Those are our clients. That's where we need to focus our customer service. Secondly, support the school sites, right? In providing that program and making sure that the program for students is implemented and implemented with fidelity. And then we want to increase the program quality and compliance, looking at how our IEPs are doing, are we being compliant? And then decrease the litigation. That being said, we came up with several different themes, and Margaret's going to walk us through the themes of the plan. Margaret? Hi, good evening. My name is Margaret. Yes, 10 themes emerged from the review that we did. And they're district collaboration. These are the areas, professional development, special education, central, discipline guidelines that for, that go out to the, to the sites and the staff, data, staffing, handbooks, looking at least restrictive environment, and also what MTSS and interventions look like. These are the cross, these are where the intersections between general ed and special education really, really become dynamic. So as I said, there were 10 themes. And in those themes, we had a number of recommendations. It got translated in this slide as activities. And when we built out the implementation plan, we also knew that there were going to be individuals that needed to be assigned with the responsibility or someone with the role to ensure that the work was carried through. We also knew that having a timeline was important for every, just for communication purposes and to give incentive. And because it is going to have a quarterly monitoring, we wanted to have evidence provided so that everybody could see the progress being made and whether or not we actually met a particular goal or how we had to refashion that work. So we, we designed a spreadsheet. And at first, we had set it up with each of the activities under the theme, and this is what it looks like. And so you can see person responsible, it has timeline, evidence, data, the date that the quarterly monitoring would take place, and whether or not it intersected with the SIM plan, which we had talked about, the significant disproportionality plan, which is again, another overlap between special education and general ed. And we gave this, this structure to your directors with the special ed team so that they could then look at what, where the, where the, where the recommendations fit into the work that they were already doing. Because so much of the work, when you looked at the recommendations, we're doing this, we've got this, we're doing, but we wanted it to get to a point where it was more intentional and documented in a way that we could then go back and, and show the conscious efforts that were being done. And so this is where the work is now sitting with the special ed team. And I believe it goes to, oh. And then again, I was just going to add, you're going to see when, when Dr. James comes up, how the activities that she's been working on, the recommendations she's been working on, intersect with what other district initiatives are actually happening right now with MTSS, professional development, addressing discipline and other means of correction. So I am going to pass it to Dr. James.
Good evening. So we are, I'm going to, oh, it's okay. So I'm Ingrid Heimis, Director of Special Education. So one of the four areas that we worked on, there were several areas, but we wanted to take them, four main themes and talk about some of the highlights in terms of, for example, this, this one area, professional development. We've made a lot of progress. There is a lot of work to be done, but we are making, moving in the right direction. And I just highlighted some of the things that have happened. We have a professional development calendar for '25, '26 with the full activities already planned and ready to roll out. They started this month and, you know, ongoing in areas of curriculum instruction and student engagement, UDL and legal compliance. The administrators receive training on inclusive practices and also on UDL and the, you know, what that looks like in the classrooms when they walk through. And then also the administrators were trained in ADR. And we had like a SPIO, which is a reading curriculum for elementary, the supplementary curriculum, a refresher for the teachers. So there are, there are a lot of things that are happening, a lot of celebrations, and we just wanted to highlight a few of them within the professional development category. In terms of the infrastructure, we are, you know, Mildred mentioned a lot of the siloing that they found out as they were doing the special education review. So one of the main goals is to bring, you know, both sides of the house together. And we have been working closely with the CIPD department, with the LAB department, you know, checking practices and aligning practices that we, so we have, we are all like, not just special education and general education, but where do we meet? You know, how do we bring from resources to the students, training, and bringing the special education teachers to have access to the same activities in PD that their general education counterparts have? You know, all with the goal of having, you know, bringing all that to the classroom and to the students. And then the other area is in legal and family activities. There's a lot of work being done and a lot of celebrations with this too. We have a centralized system where we track filings, where we track ADR, where we are in all those processes. And so we all, the whole department up here is aware of, you know, who needs to do what and how that is logged in and everything else related to that database system. And then plan communication with the CAC Board. One of the examples that we put there is a parent mentorship group and, and then more presence and more visibility and more engagement with families from different groups. And then updated Special Education Procedure Manual, that is, you know, a work in progress. And these are just some of the activities that we wanted to highlight. Laura, where's Laura? Okay.
Good evening. Okay, so you've heard from the special ed side of the house, and now I'm going to go ahead and speak from the partner on the Jenna Ed side. So I'm a new coordinator for Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services. And our, my focus and our team's focus is on Goal Three from the SIM plan. There's two goals actually, three and five. And the first one is on infrastructure and discipline. And what would be the purpose? It's to increase instructional time. And so that means looking at quite a few things, reviewing district discipline, practices and procedures to improve attendance and address behavior concerns, that's in an equitable manner to reduce disproportionality on the special education side. For an update for the fall, we've really been working on strengthening foundational systems and procedures. And that means really taking a targeted, intentional look at the MTSS handbook and its contents, the parent handbooks for our Parenting Guardians Review, our Alternative to Suspension Programs Resource Guide, the program itself, and a strong partnership with the Western Justice Center for Conflict Resolution and/or Peer Mediation Programs to make sure that they are working for all of our students. The second goal is related to infrastructure and MTSS. And again, that's to strengthen the MTSS framework and the response to intervention process for Tier One and Tier Two General Education Instruction. So the goal is to provide intentional, high-leverage professional development, provide feedback loops to teachers, and exhaust all intervention before students move from Tier One to Tier Two and then maybe to Tier Three, which would be special education intervention and support. I will share that I'm very excited about this work this fall and being new to the district and the team. We have five very energized, excited principals at our five focal schools, Altadena, Don Benito, Hamilton, Sierra Madre Elementary, and Webster. We've come up with many agreements for this school year, and I'm excited about the prospect of the work that we're going to be doing as a team. Number one, the principals and I, we've already agreed to meet once per month. We're going to do a deep dive into the student-study-team process, the data cycles, exhausting interventions for our students, increasing parent engagements by offering a various, of various surveys and meetings and trainings that are built around their needs, and really looking at our progressive monitoring and our data cycles to make sure that we're focused on, you know, great literacy for students, great programming in that area, increasing our attendance, and then lowering our, our amount of discipline opportunities with intervention. So I can go on for an hour about this, but I do want to honor your time and, and share with you on the CSIS side what's been going on. Thank you.
So while you've heard some of the actions that have been taken by Dr. Heimis, her team, and Dr. Barbara and her team, I hope that what it speaks to is that that district collaboration across the board is necessary because the, the framework of an MTSS requires us to work in tandem because we're not having two sides of the house. We're one family that lives together and serves the same people. And so the collaboration between special education with, and, you know, the, the work that Dr. Barbara's doing is extraordinarily important, and that's why we wanted to make sure that you could see those examples. There is plenty of other action being taken within this implementation plan. So this is just a, a short view into some of the progress already made. But at this time, we're happy to take questions. Again, we have our expert evaluators who are here, who have helped us really define the, the biggest areas of focus. And then, of course, the implementation leads who are taking us through each step.
Thank you very much. That was very informative. I'll take questions now, Mr. Harden.
Thank you very much for this presentation. And just looking through the actual plan, you know, it'll be helpful as, it's, it's helpful to see the, the themes and the, and the detail in, in describing the actions related to those themes. I'll be excited to see sort of how the timelines are added to, to the roadmap. And even if they're, you know, not exact timelines, you know, seeing short, medium, long-term, you know, just so we have a sense of the, the weight or the lift of some of these actions that we're putting forth. And then maybe the, some prioritization of, you know, this is what we have to tackle now versus what we have to tackle later, so that some things are non-negotiable. And we know if we're coming up against significant budget cuts, you know, the, the top priority items, we know we have to deal with regardless. And so that would be helpful to see. I would encourage this not to get stale, this document. I see it as a living document. So I know, you know, PDFs are, are quicker to produce, but over the long term, if it's a place where it lives, where folks can check in with it and see, changes always happen in a roadmap. You know, they can see the progression, they can see how things are being programmed, or adjustments are being made. can see how things are being programmed or adjustments are being made, and perhaps, you know, actions may have to be curtailed due to lack of funding. And then just, you know, in the spring, the, I'm trying not to use acronyms, whenever possible, the Special Education Community Advisory Committee, otherwise known as CAC, they put forth some recommendations, and I did see a mention of collaboration with them in the presentation, but one of the things that they suggested that resonated with me was communications log, you know, some ability for, for parents and caregivers to give, to connect with the folks that are administering the IEP. And I was, so I was going to ask if there's any plan, didn't see that explicitly mentioned in the, in the, in the action plan. Is there any plans to work with them to implement that idea or some of those ideas?
I am aware that our directors do meet, have regular meetings that they are setting up with the CAC Executive Board. And that is certainly something that we can, that I can get some more detail on how far this has come. I know that at the last meeting, there was discussion around the communication log and how that might actually be implemented.
Okay, great. And I think, oh.
On Monday.
Sorry?
Sorry, they're just giving me specificity. The, the meeting was on Monday.
Playbooks, I'm a big fan of playbooks. I appreciate the fact that you're putting together procedure, procedural manuals. That's a big win as far as I'm concerned. And the parent mentorship group, sounds like a great, great idea. That's all I got?
Ms. Kenny.
I would echo, perhaps, put more emphasis on Mr. Harden's remark about the timelines. I don't know if this document itself can be updated to show us at least what's, what's going to be focused on in year one. I think it's important for us, for the community, for the CAC members, everyone to have an understanding. There's a lot in this plan, and already just running sped on a day-to-day basis is a lot. So I'd rather we were successful at a smaller bunch of things than try and spread ourselves too thin and not have success. I think it would be helpful to understand kind of the dependencies, if you will, like this really needs to be a year-one task because this next task can't happen until that one gets done, and that's why that other one is going to be in year two. And I do, I think the monitoring, I know that staff will be monitoring themselves, but I think having kind of that document out there and giving periodic updates to the CAC, which would then give an opportunity for anyone from the public to kind of get a, okay, here's how, you know, this one, we ran into a stumbling block, but, so we decided to pivot and do this other task instead, and you know, this is, this is how we're making progress, so that we're not surprised at the end of the year or at the end of three years to find out. And having been in this district for a very long time, I've seen a lot of implementation plans. And sometimes they just, they just, it's like the wind carries them off, and you're like, what happened to that implementation plan from a few years ago? Because it didn't get finished, but it just disappears, and then we start over again. When the CAC presented to us in June, I asked if they could have a formal response, and I don't know if there was agreement from staff. And by formal, I did mean written, because I think that's the best way for there to not be misunderstandings about what can and cannot be done. And, and I hope that staff feels that they can say, no, we can't do this, or we can't do it in the way you want it, but we can try this instead. But I just, having that written and, and given to the CAC will provide clarity for everyone, and so that if they feel then they need to do further advocacy, there's a clear, this is what we can promise and this is what we can't, and they know where the work lies, rather than, I'd hate for just people to kind of feel unsatisfied. And, and they did go to, you know, a bit of work to, and put those together and presented them to us, so I want to honor that as well. So if, if, can we say that for the CAC that there is a commitment that they will get, not in lengthy, but at least some written response to the recommendations they presented in June?
I can certainly, everything that you've mentioned thus far is, is possible. I will make sure that our team does that.
And I just, and if we can tell them a reasonable date by which they can expect it, then they won't feel that they have to bother you in between. Wonderful, thank you.
Is anybody else? Ms. Fredericks?
I'm going to be a broken record. CAC again. The part about the planned and communicate, planned and communicated with CAC board about parent mentorship group, I guess the theme is really like, CAC puts a lot of work, and I just, I don't have a clear idea of how it integrates with this or how their role is hopefully one of the main factors in, in the plan. So when I see planned and communicated with CAC board about the parent mentorship group, it's, it sounds very one directional, like, here you go, you know, and not more collaborative dialogue, feedback from them. Can you elaborate a little bit on this parent mentorship group?
I'm going to invite Dr. Heimis up to, to respond to those details. I don't have them, but I would like to say that, one, I, I, I agree with the statements around the involvement of the CAC. And in particular, I think my interactions have primarily been with the Executive Board, a very passionate, committed, and intelligent group of people who are rightfully advocating for improvements that, that are partnering with us. It's all very seamless in that sense. Structures that we need to work on are, what does that communication loop look like? Are responses done in writing and presented to all at CAC meetings so that the full public can have that information, et cetera? In terms of the parent mentorship, that is just one example of one form of collaboration. That's why I don't, I don't necessarily have the details of how far that has come, but that's certainly something that I would imagine is happening in that communicative structure, not something that I think we've designed and just presented, but again, I just want to make sure that we have that validation here.
Yes, hello. Regarding the parent partner mentorship group, they are looking into their, other districts, Poway is one of them that uses that model right now. And, and one of the goals is to bring different groups of parents and then having, you know, connect, network, and then support them in the access to, for example, the, the educational environment for the student or whatever the specific needs of the students are, so different areas within that mentorship group so that they can be, feel, you know, they can be a support for other parent groups. So they're looking into this model. This is something new this year. Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else? We're going to wrap this up. Thank you very much, Dr. Hill and everybody. I appreciate it. Looks good. All right, so now we're moving on to inclusive practices, early childhood program with embedded instruction with Ms. Lindsay Lewis.
I'm going to do a short introduction for them and then go ahead and bring them up. So in a nice transition from special education, we want to talk about one prime example of inclusive practices. We have a vision for inclusive practices across the district, which is what you are really demonstrated by the work of Dr. Heimis, Dr. Barbara, and what they represent, is this concept that the general education and special education merger is beneficial to all students, and that students are served and centered from that, that perspective. One area where we have been piloting and doing deep work is in early childhood. So with that, I'm going to have, again, you'll see Dr. Heimis, but joined by our Director of Early Childhood Education, Lindsay Lewis. So I'll go ahead and invite her up.
Hello, Superintendent Blanco, board members and faculty members. Thank you for having us. As we go through this presentation, please note the pictures are of actual students from this year and last year, so note their cute, smiley faces.
So P, good evening again. PUSD vision, mission, and values shows our commitment and cultural responsiveness to all our students. And then we have that our values place students first with decisions driven by what's best for them based on cultural competency, equity, and collaboration. And then PUSD definition of inclusive practices fosters a culture where, sorry, my glasses, okay, that's better, fosters a culture where all students feel a sense of belonging and where they're, they're all taught and given the opportunity to develop. These practices encompass a set of intentional intervention and strategies designed to ensure that all students have equal access to quality education. Rooted in the belief that all students are capable learners and value contributors to the school community, a primary goal of inclusive practices is to create a learning environment where every student is supported and has the opportunity to thrive. The reason why I read the definition is because this is a definition that we worked together in our principals group, and we presented a definition of inclusive practices so everybody could be on the same page and ask for feedback and then revise the definition as we continue to work towards the goal of having inclusive practices in all the schools in the districts, in the district, sorry. And then so the next, oh, that's the next slide. Why embedded instruction? And yeah, these are real children, and it's, you know, from this year, as Lindsay said. An inclusive practice that we implement in PUSD, since we just finished talking about some of the goals and the work that we're doing in special education, is called embedded instruction, and, which is a program developed in response to the mobilization of the state, at the state level in strengthening the early intervention programs and practices that move towards more successful and equitable educational experience that serve diverse learners.
Embedded instruction paves the way to foster inclusive practices, promote diversity as part of early learning experiences and equitable access in the least restrictive environment for students with and without IEPs. Young learners are introduced to diversity as part of the early learning experience. So what is embedded instruction? Embedded instruction or EI is an intentional teaching model used in the inclusive classroom settings that enables students with and without disabilities to learn together. The co-teaching model includes two teachers, a content expert, general education teacher, and a credentialed special education teacher for differentiation and targeted supports. In this inclusive environment, students with disabilities access general education curriculum alongside neurotypical peers in the least restrictive environment. Some of the targeted strategies focus on teaching target skills in daily routines and activities. For language model, neurotypical peers serve as language models demonstrating rich developmentally appropriate language in inclusive settings where children of all abilities learn together. Embedded instruction promotes language development, social communication skills, and inclusive participation. A few of the embedded instruction program goals are quality play-based instruction, pre-academic exposure, and neurodiversity understanding. High-quality early childhood education programs provide play-based instruction through highly engaging activities and daily routines that target skills in natural learning environments. Students with disabilities show significant progress and growth through early intervention, setting the foundation for future academic, social, emotional, and physical development. This slide shows our enrollment trends for embedded instruction over the past three years. For example, the top rows talk about preschool. In 2023 to 24 school year, we had 83 students with IEPs and 93 students in general educations that were in general education students. And this year, we're projected to have 80 students with IEPs and 100 general education students. The next set of numbers is for TK, Transitional Kindergarten. In 2425, in the center column, there were 39 students with IEPs and 54 general education students. This year, our projected enrollment is 40 general education students, I'm sorry, 40 students with IEPs and 56 general education students. For kindergarten this year, we will have two classrooms with embedded instruction, serving 20 students with IEPs and 28 general education students. For the purpose of this slide, students with speech and language services only are considered general education students. Pre-K is year-round enrollment, which is why these numbers are projected. Again, some of the staffing and program model for the instructional staff, all of these embedded instruction classrooms are co-taught by a fully credentialed general education teacher, a fully credentialed special education teacher. And then for pre-K and TK, each class is also staffed with one general education assistant and one special education instructional aide. A few of the benefits are listed here on the left side. Students learn standard-based foundational skills including diversity, inclusion, and empathy with same-age peers. It offers the continuum of least restrictive environment and more defensible offers of faith. There's ongoing collaboration between general education and special education staff, and ongoing grant-funded mentoring and training with job-embedded supports for all teachers. Pre-K has multiple funding sources on the right side, including the state contract and grants that support preschool special education. And TK and kindergarten use the benefit of the UPK grants and also some of the other ADA-specific grants for TK and kindergarten.
And then PUSD is committed to providing pre-K, two kindergarten options, and a continuum of programs and supports that meets the needs of all students within the least restrictive environment. So having a model like this, it brings together the students within the same educational setting, both students with IEPs and students without IEPs, your typical peers.
And we wanted to end with a few parent and teacher testimonials from the 2425 parents and staff. Top right, "There are too many to count. He has benefited from the teaching styles of both educators, but my son has benefited the most from the modeling of other peers. He learns best through observation."
My child is the one with the, with the, oops, with the rectangle. My child is neurotypical and has frequently engaged in play and learning activities with neurodivergent peers. In my experience, the exposure to neurodivergence has made my child very accepting of different abilities and also taught them to pitch social play and assist learning at the level appropriate to the peer in front of them.
And bottom right, "Having two teachers in the classroom significantly enhances the quality of support and scaffolding provided to children throughout the day." Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was really interesting. Do we have any questions from the board? Because I have one. May I go first? Okay, I have, yes, one, benefits of the embedded instruction. You said it paves the way to inclusivity, and young learners are introduced to diversity and empathy. Why is that important? Why is that important for the rest of your K through 12 experience? Like, why are we investing in this?
The world that we live in right now is so deeply rooted in how we connect with people around us, how we see difference in each other and find similarities. And bringing this diversity through abilities is so important at the critical ages, starting in preschool. So we believe that having the difference of abilities in the classroom really help grow this diversity, starting at the earliest ages in our school district.
How does it help with getting a job?
Oftentimes, these are called soft skills, empathy, kindness. They are not always written in stone in terms of our curriculum, but always asked of how can you communicate, can you collaborate with peers? The jobs that we have today and the ones that we don't even know will be for tomorrow, this is what equips them, not just the academics and the social connections, but how they're able to be empathetic, how they can help people that have different abilities than them. We don't have special grocery stores. We have access for everyone, no matter what you need, you get the support you need, the just-in-time, right support, no matter your ability. That's what we have to teach.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to muddy the waters there, because that was pretty good. No, we got it on record. I'm sorry, Ingrid, that was just really great.
No, it's okay, it's okay. I just wanted to add, too, that it goes back to what we were talking earlier in the implementation plan and in the review, the siloing, and this is a good example of how, you know, both general education and special education students come together within that educational setting.
Right, the siloing is something I wanted to get to at another time. Right, the siloing is something I wanted to get to at another time, but that is important. So when you said that it's not embedded in our curriculum or it's not written in our curriculum, you said that when you answered, right? Can you repeat that part? You said, even though it's not embedded in our curriculum, even though what's not embedded?
The standards don't teach us to say, you must be kind.
Okay.
Instead, they teach us how to play with each other, how to collaborate. These are the soft skills that our teachers are doing in the embedded classrooms.
Okay, so even though it's not embedded in the curriculum, how do we get it there?
We have training, professional development for our teachers to help remind them of the importance of their work.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Mr. Harden and then Ms. Kenny.
Speaking of professional development, I just, you know, I note that there's some grant money that expires in '26, so the impacts of how professional development is sustainable beyond that, have you given thought to how nimble you can be in a funding, in a restrictive funding environment?
Definitely a concern and why we. We continue to look to the state for support in how to continue professional development as UPK comes to an end. We're also using EETD. You're gonna ask me what that stands for. It's the Teacher Development Grant for early education. And we use those funds to help with professional development. Obviously, having continuous staff that stay with us, then the professional development can grow and be less because we're so intense at this time. So we hope that we can continue to have the same sets of teams, teachers, so that they can keep implementing. When you have new teams, you have to start over with some professional development and obviously that takes more time. But we have planned the cost for professional development for this school year and next school year, hopefully using the grant money that we currently have while we continue to look for other grants to support this continued work.
Two questions. For the Gen Ed students, is this a choice? If I put my student at a school, do I know that I'm going to be in an embedded classroom as a Gen Ed student? Is it a, do some families want to opt out? How does that work?
It's not an opt-out. We believe that all students are able to belong in any classrooms, public education. However, we do provide information for families that are placed into a general, into the embedded classroom for both students with IEPs and typically developing peers. So they receive information about the structure of the classroom.
I just saw the, there's a big jump in the Gen Ed students from 2425 and preschool to 2526. I wasn't sure how that was working. And then on the staffing model. So in preschool, when we say fully credentialed Gen Ed teacher, that's a preschool permit teacher. But in TK, it's a TK teacher who, and I think this is the year where we finally have to fully implement that they have what I think is beyond a Kinder, a K5 teacher would have, right? They need to have more early childhood development, is that?
They're credentialing, you mean?
Yeah, they're credentialing.
They do have to have, demonstrate either early childhood development courses having been met or have the permit.
Now, on the special ed teacher, are there varieties of special ed teacher? Or is it the same credential for whether I'm teaching Kinder or TK or preschool? Do you see what I mean? Do they have the same kind of early childhood credentialing?
Preschool has a different credential than the TK credential. It's focused specifically on early education.
And it's for special education?
Correct.
Okay, so it is, I wasn't, I didn't know that, okay. So that, but they're on our regular, they're, they're on our regular teaching salary schedule, say, is that true?
That's correct.
Okay, they're, so they're all special education teachers, but they have a different specialty?
Yes.
And then the education assistants, something similar where there's preschool aides and then there's special ed aides who have different training, et cetera. Okay, wonderful, thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Dr. Velazquez. It's okay, go ahead.
I have Dr. Velazquez.
Oh, I just have one simple question and it has to do about teacher buy-in and how has been the process with our labor partners and the teachers of these particular grades? And how the communication between us and them or between everybody?
That's a great question. We, we know that in any situation where you're asking people to do something together. Oh, is my mic not on? Oh. It shows green, which to me means go. Okay. Oh, that does sound different, I'm so sorry. So this one doesn't work. In any situation where you ask people to do something together, in this case, co-teach or collaborate, there is a level of ensuring that the relationship is communicative, positive, respectful, all of those things. That does take time, sometimes to foster. In the initial rollout of some of the grade levels, teachers are, depends on the grade level, but they're placed sort of based on contract, credential, et cetera. So sometimes the teachers do not know each other prior to. That's why the professional development and the time for discussion and planning together is so critical. We, again, do have those grants to support that in, in the pre-K arena. We have additional time that we are able to do more specifically with TK and Kinder. But to be fully transparent, we know that there are struggles because they need that time to plan together and to negotiate agreements. We actually talk pretty frequently, I meet on a bi-weekly basis with Mr. Gardner, our UTP president, and I know we've also had conversation in various realms with our, with our labor partners and also with the assistance with CSEA, to hear what the concerns are from, from their unit members and we try to address them as quickly as we can. One example that I would really like to uplift in Dr. Hyman's and Dr. Lewis's work in this is that they created these designated embedded instruction learning days where the partner teachers would come together and they would be taken through structures and training. Some of it was philosophical, a lot of it was pedagogical, and then come away with their, their design for the next few weeks. And it's happening on a regular cyclical basis. We are seeing significant improvements in just the comfort with co-teaching. So it will take more of that.
Hello. So can you talk to us a little bit about whether or not you have a plan for this year for evaluation and recalibration as a consequence of that training and that work, that collaborative work?
Just a clarification then, do you mean evaluating how the, the productivity of the co-teaching or of the program goals? The professional development?
Yeah, how hard this work, what are the challenges, what, et cetera. So, so we have this process. How are we recalibrating the process and assessing it as it progresses, taking into consideration some of the challenges presented by, or, or the lessons presented by?
Thank you.
Our teachers.
Thank you for that question. Yes, at the end of each of our collaborative professional development sessions that we have the co-teachers together, they fill out a feedback survey that has the same three questions to help us calibrate what they took away from the training, how they'll implement right now, and what feedback, what do they need next. It helps keep us aligned to making sure the professional development is relevant to what's happening in their classrooms, as well as us providing information that we get from the state about best practices in inclusive work that they need to be doing. So we have that feedback to help guide how we develop professional development and that helps keep us on track for the next sessions.
Anybody else?
Okay.
Is she okay? I can't.
Velazquez?
I, no.
Okay, great. All right, thank you, that was wonderful. Okay, so before we get to the action items, is there a consensus to move action item number three consensus to the top? Because it's, we have some people here. So do we want, it's consensus, right? Okay. Just moving three to the top. Is that all right with everybody? Yeah, I think so. Okay, yeah, let's do that. So we're gonna start with number three. All right, so item number three, approval of resolution 2836, resolution of intention of the Board of Trustees of the Pasadena Unified School District to consider proposals to enter into agreements to develop a portion of real property located at 1259 Linda Vista Avenue for joint occupancy and rescinding resolution 2188. Mr. Bravo Karimi. He's here. We have a resolution. All right, so does anybody, do we want, is there a conversation? Do you have a comment? Oh, I need the first and second. I'll make a motion.
You're motioning?
I made a motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Motion to approve. Is there any comments? Oh.
Are we taking comments from us?
Yes, a public comment.
Comments and questions from this group or?
I guess we have like nine total, so. Yeah, two.
Two.
Yeah. Okay, two minutes?
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna read three at a time, so make sure you're ready. Tim Martinez, Jeff Herman, then Douglas Rawls.
I appreciate that. Oh, that works, okay. Good evening, President Hawley, board members. My name's Tim Martinez. I live at 1404 Chamberlain Road in Pasadena and I attended Linda Vista School throughout the 1990s. I also live in the neighborhood. And I just wanted to first share just how important this school site is to our neighborhood, to our community. And I really hope that we can be partners and stakeholders in whatever you decide to do there. This school has a lot of history. The year I was born, it was 100 years old, this school site, when they had the first schoolhouse, when Linda Vista was nothing more than a sleepy country village. There's a lot of history there. It was a Gaberlinno village. We had a wonderful school culture in the time that I was there that I, I wish that I could share with you. We were much more connected with our fellow community members in Northwest Pasadena and Altadena. I wish we still had that. And it's, the, the building where I went to kindergarten, where we had our cafeteria, our auditorium, is a historic building, is probably around 100 years old. This site's very important to us, even today, because of the Linda Vista Park. I have a five-year-old in the neighborhood myself. And it's not just neighborhood, young families and kids and dog walkers who enjoy that park, but I know of people who come from elsewhere in the city or from Eagle Rock and other areas who also enjoy that park. And so I really hope that whatever happens, you know that our neighborhood, West Pasadena in general, has been, been strong supporters of the bond measures and so forth to support the district. And I think that, you know, we want to see a deal that helps the district, however, is best financially, but that also is a mutually beneficial arrangement with, working with the neighborhood, working with the city. And so I urge you to please consider us partners in this process. Please consult us, please don't leave us out of it. Thank you very much.
Jeff Herman, Jeff Herman, Douglas Rawls, then Susan Mclemondo. No Jeff Herman? No Douglas? Douglas Rawls?
Thank you, President Hawley and the board. This is my first time at a PUSD meeting. I find it very interesting. I think that the issues that you're tackling, the things that you are facing are daunting. And I want to say that I am very pleased to see that you have taken your job very seriously. And I think PUSD is in the best hands it can be right now. So I want to thank you for your service and your dedication. I have lived in the Linda Vista area for 28 years myself, have really enjoyed being part of the community. And I know that the school has been something we wanted to send our kids to, but it closed before we could. And it has been there for a long time and we drive by it and say, gee, wouldn't that be nice if it were a school again or, you know, brought back to life because it is such a lovely site? And I know that there are a lot of people here and a lot of people who've come before who have implored and tried to impart to you how important the park is to the community. And I know it's a gathering place and I personally enjoy it, I know my family does and my neighbors do. I hope that you are able to have some benefit financially from whatever plan you make. I think that I echo Mayor Gordo's sentiments. I, I think that we should all be participants in that process. I know I want to be. And I know that there's a discussion about a portion of the property. And I assume from that it means the part that's already developed and has structures on it as opposed to the park. Because I, I think that whatever happens, preserving the park is, is, and that open space is really important for the neighborhood and the community. Thank you.
Susan Mclemondo, Maureen Gelberg, and David Reynaldo.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Susan McLeimans. I have lived in the Linda Vista neighborhood for many, many years and I sent both of my sons to Linda Vista School. And while they were in attendance at Linda Vista, I was on the PTA board. And I was one of many parents who worked tirelessly for the passage of Measure Y. And we were told at the time through glossy presentations that Measure Y funds would be available to renovate the older buildings and to replace the ugly bungalows with a beautiful two-story building. And we all worked very hard to see that happen, but unfortunately, Measure Y funds never made their way to Linda Vista School. And the years went by and there were more bond measures and more initiatives to raise money, and there was never money for Linda Vista. And as everyone knows, sadly, the school was closed about 20 years ago and was allowed to fall into dreadful disrepair. And as others have noted, it's a beautiful, wonderful school site, right next to the library, right next to our fire station, a central part of being a part of the Linda Vista neighborhood. It's a, it gives you a sense of place and a sense of community. My, notwithstanding all of that disappointment in not having a vibrant school there anymore and instead having a site in disrepair, I'm very heartened that my neighborhood has continued to be a strong supporter of Pasadena Unified. And I'm glad for that because I believe in public education. I'm the happy beneficiary of kindergarten through UCLA Law School, public education. And I hope that, as others have said, that we can work together as a community, as a school board, through our city council, to make sure that we find a solution that helps Pasadena Unified and that also preserves the special character of this school site for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Maureen, Maureen Gelberg. Sorry if I mispronounced.
Maureen Gelberg, thank you for having me here tonight and allowing me to speak. I am resident of Linda Vista for 13 years, have two boys that go to the park all the time. I also represent the Linda Vista Annandale Association as a board member and organize a group of about 88 women, we're up to now, of women in the neighborhood who are mainly moms of young children who use the park all the time. And I'm here to ask you to preserve the park. We are, as everyone has said before, hope to be partners in the development of where the school site currently stands. But our ask is to preserve the park and keep it out of the RFP so that it can remain the heart of our community where we gather, where we see people gather every day, whether it's, you know, bike riders or young toddlers. see people gather every day, whether it's, you know, bike riders, or young toddlers going through, or people playing soccer, or people doing painting in the park. And as someone else mentioned, it's not just the Linda Vista neighbors, but neighbors from all over Pasadena that I meet and talk to and enjoy our park. I asked the women who couldn't be here tonight in my group if they could send a couple of sentences about what the park meant to them, and I got novels. I got paragraphs, so I'm not going to, I don't have time to share all of it with you, but I did email it to you. But we also had a survey that we did for the Linda Vista Anandale Association in preparation of our town hall to talk about what to do with the site, or what our suggestions would be, and 87% of the 250 respondents said that the park was very important to keep as is. So I hope I can implore you to think about the park and keep that. Thank you.
Good evening, board. My name is David Rinaldo. I'm new to Pasadena in about four years. When I was at USC, I studied in the Marshall School of Business, and I was really passionate about downtown LA revitalization. So I have some different insights from a money-making perspective, because I view the park as a potential revenue generator for whatever businesses or mixed-use property you guys put there. The park currently is already a revenue anchor because it attracts organic traffic to the site from locals and non-locals alike. It's also a place that makes it a destination for families, instead just like a tucked-away destination, which I know, we had a store that closed in the neighborhood before I moved in, because, you know, if there's no real draw to get families to stay around in the area, then money will not stay with them. The European Town Square model could be a great model of how a park and central space really helps bring profit to the businesses that end up using the space. It helps fill tenants' residences, keeps people from siphoning in and out. It already has the existing organic use, and also if the space is used for affordable housing for the teachers and firefighters, which I've heard, me as a college consultant, I read a lot of essays from kids who grew up in the disparity of income, and it's a huge, huge impact on their psyche. But having a public space where kids from different socioeconomic rungs of the ladder can integrate will give those kids from lower-income, you know, families the ability to integrate with the privileged community, be able to have the kind of connections, relationships that are usually reserved for like a Marshall School of Business alumni as they're growing up, because it will really help integrate those two communities together that will end up using the space. So my bottom line would be that I think the park, whether it's included in the development as maybe like they did with Grand Park, where they really tried to give Grand Park a lot of different areas for different uses, could be really profitable for any like mixed-space use that ends up happening. Or even if the park stays as it is, kind of tucked away if it's not redeveloped, but it does attract a lot of Glendale, Eagle Rock families who like that. It's off the street, the kids won't run into traffic, and it's a very cherished part of the community as well. Thank you very much.
Amy Valencia, then Brian Hinckley.
Good evening, board. Nice to see you again. I think this is like my fourth time up here, and it was first for the bungalows, and it was the tape, and now it's to a point where I'm so excited that we're at a point where we could discuss the future for the site, because I live right across the street and face the back parking lot. And as everyone has said, I'm on the Linda Vista, I'm on the Linda Vista Board as well, and everyone has said so far about the park. And my concern would be that we would use or try to entice people of our community, because we've got architects, developers, and our own Linda Vista area and neighborhood, so that we can keep the integrity of our neighborhood. So whatever new building, or whether it's community center, mixed-use, small market like we had with Jurgensen's, a small coffee house perhaps on the corner, senior housing, housing for teachers, whatever, that consideration be taken for just the neighborhood and the aesthetic. I'm sure it will. But we also want to encourage collaboration in the way of hosting an event soon, or when it's feasible for the board to come to the park, have a coffee in the park with the community, with LVAA, Linda Bistens, and collaborate and talk about what we can do with the site. Thank you for your time.
Brian Hinckley.
Hi, my name's Brian Hinckley. I live at 1331 Wellington Avenue, which is the street right behind the property, and am fortunate enough to drive by the property every day and drive by the preschool. And I have two young children who use the park, and we use the park multiple times a week. And like many of my neighbors up here, I just want to reiterate the importance and the value of the park as part of the community. I was there last night with my son and Mr. Gelberg, and we actually ran into some residents of East Pasadena that were there with their 16-month-old child who was walking for the first time ever and was bouncing around as young babies do. And it's a really special time where we're able to meet new people in the community, and they'll come back and expand and be part of the community as well. So I just wanted to reiterate that I feel like the neighbors, the park is really important for the community, and I ask that you work with the city and the mayor, who was here earlier, who is willing to work with you and the school district, please partner with the city to help clean up that site. It's been there way too long, and it needs, it's a liability to you and to the whole community. So please, work with the city, find a way that we can clean that up, and find a way that we can maintain and expand that park for the community and the people of Pasadena.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor. Oh, Dr. Velazquez is going to go first, then other comments if we have them. Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, and I would like to start with asking a question. Do we know who is going to respond to my question?
Can you ask a question first, please?
Yes. So the resolution as written acknowledges that the filled area of the property is under joint use agreement with the City of Pasadena as a park area for residents, but it does not operate, actually protect the park in its operative section. Is that correct?
The resolution of intent is to begin a process of soliciting and evaluating proposals for development, and so the resolution does not include that language.
That includes all five acres of the property, correct?
Excuse me?
That includes all five acres? So the resolution would include us moving forward and all five acres of the property?
Yes. And by virtue of, by virtue of using the joint occupancy statutes, it requires the district to maintain some public use to public benefit. There's an alternative approach, which the district is not taking, which would not have that community benefit requirement. There was a presentation at the last board meeting, the Surplus Land Act would allow for the district, under a different process, to lease on a long-term basis, just like we are proposing tonight, to just begin the process, and would have zero requirement for the district to have any joint use or community benefit. And so the district is choosing to use a path to develop the property that actually requires us to maintain some public use, because that's what we want.
Right, but a question. So a community center would be considered in service of the residents or a community service, or like, right?
It could.
If a community center would meet that requirement?
Yes.
So let's say that a developer takes the five acres and develops it into housing and includes a community center in the first floor, then that requirement is met under that proposal?
It would meet the requirement, but the benefit of the joint occupancy path that we're taking, that we're recommending that we take, is that the district has substantially more control over what ultimately gets developed. Not only do we maintain ownership of a portion of the property, but we have a lot more say in what gets developed. The alternative pathway, which theoretically could be more economically beneficial to the district, does not. And so we would not have any requirement under the alternative pathway, which we're not taking, and we would also have not only no community benefit portion of the property, we would have very little say in what ultimately gets developed. There are requirements under that separate pathway that would not give us the oversight, the direction that we are allowed to under the joint occupancy statutes.
Okay, so what I understand is that the community benefit would be met with the park or through other avenues or other proposals within the proposal of the development. So one way a developer could meet the community benefit requirement is by including the park, but it, that is not required or not specified in the intention of this document.
It could be met by a community center. The agreement, the proposal that the district ultimately moves forward with must be approved by the board. The board will approve or deny the ultimate agreement with the developer.
Got it. Question. Has a financial analysis of the benefits and downsides of one proposal versus the other being presented to the board? Let's, going to bypass the conversation that we had last, earlier this month, when we talked about how the study that we commissioned was not made or presented, that the only proposal that we're moving forward is Linda Vista, even though we didn't need a study to determine that it was empty. So we're going to skip that part. And what I want to know is, has a cost-benefit analysis of, for example, selling the property versus continuing with the process of joint use being presented to the board? Has that happened?
We did discuss last week that the drawbacks of selling the property would be that the funds.
As I understand that you've explained that, that you've indicated that there were benefits, and then you explained that the benefit would be that the profits would go to the general fund, but what I'm asking you is very specific. It's about whether or not this cost-benefit analysis has been presented to the board.
Information has been presented to the board. As I explained at the last board meeting, there's no this project or that project. It's not one or the other. Unlike the use of our own bond funds, where we must prioritize, because while we have significant amounts that were approved by the voters, there's not an unlimited amount. This is different. This is not using district funds. If there are five projects, 10 projects, that would also generate revenue for our students and also have a joint use provision and benefit, we would pursue all 10. So this is not being pursued at the expense of another opportunity. They are not in competition with other opportunities.
Yeah, I don't think that that was my point. I think that my point was that, even though we were advised that there are different implications to the different paths forward, we have not been presented with what that would look like. So for example, let's say that by going into a joint use agreement, we would get half the revenue that we would go, if we actually would go and sell the property. We don't have that information, right? And so that is an assessment that we didn't get an opportunity to make.
The board has been provided that information, and the reason, and we discussed last week, the reason why a sale does not make sense, with the example you've brought up a couple times, is because it doesn't meet the objectives of the district, which is to provide funds in support of our students. The other reason why we are pursuing, and we also presented last week.
... not being given the opportunity to make that assessment. But, okay, thank you. Another question, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, because I just want to be considerate of everybody's. The next question is, the comments earlier in the meeting gave me the impression that we have not been in communication with the city about our future plans for Linda Vista. It seems like both the mayor and city councilman, Steve Madison, were surprised by our move. So are we taking, are we, are we in conversation with our partners?
Yes.
Oh, yes? Is that the answer, yes?
Yes, we have met with city planning staff very preliminarily, just to do very preliminary due diligence. But every project that we do, even on property that we own, goes through a city approval process. That process requires approvals. It requires community engagement. And so even though we've already begun that outreach with city partners, that work doesn't stop. It continues. It's very in-depth. And so respectfully to the mayor and the councilmen, we take the partnership with the city very seriously. We work very collaboratively with our counterparts in the city. Another example that the councilmen brought up was the housing project. That is a project that has required a very substantial amount of collaboration with our partners in the city. So this is the very beginning of a long process. This does not approve any development of Linda Vista. This is a necessary, required legal step that allows us to begin to solicit and evaluate proposals. Ultimately, the proposals can be approved or denied by the board, based on whichever criteria the board decides.
Right. Okay, so I just want to recognize the willingness and the participation of all the neighbors in the Linda Vista area, and reiterate our commitment to community engagement, because not only this particular community, but we walk in collaboration with the city in general, not just city government, but the entire city in moving forward projects like this. And as we are looking to, for ways to increase our general funds, we must also take into consideration the relationship we hold with those communities. And it is, you know, I think it's a better strategy to move forward with a strong footing and a true sense of partnership, rather than start with a collaboration that fails to meet that basic benchmark. Not only it is more expensive, it creates bad will, to move forward in a way where our community, neighbors, and city partners feel that we have not been authentic in our communication process. As one of the speakers earlier mentioned, the Linda Vista community is ready and has been meeting and organizing in support of having some movement for this property. 250 people responded to an internal survey. That is a significant number, that is a significant reach. In fact, we made changes in curriculum with a much lower number of participation than 250 respondents, to be clear. So, and out of those 250 respondents, 87% indicated that the park is very important for them. Not only that, because answering a survey online is easy. 120 people came to an in-person meeting to express that same sentiment. And so with this very clear and specific evidence, we have enough information to let us know what is the disposition and intention of this community to engage in the process of understanding the future of this particular property. And we can start in good footing with this community, or start having a difficult relationship from the start. So we risk wasting both time and money if we do not seriously take the disposition of this community to preserve and develop the site in partnership with us. So we had the opportunity for the first time in 20 years to move forward with this property in a way that is positive, and we are risking it as a matter of a strategy of strong-arming people into seeing how we can get more money. When we don't even, when we're not even willing to give that financial analysis to the people that are the stewardships of that decision and ultimately responsible to that community. So I would like to suggest a friendly amendment to this resolution in which we acknowledge that the filled area of the property and the, under the joint agreement with the city, is something that matters to us, and in our direction, we are ready to. And in our direction, we are ready to clarify that the park is an important part of moving forward. Because I do not see this project being successful for us without taking into account the leadership and the partnership of this community that wants to move forward with us.
Dr. Velazquez, I need you to clarify your amendment. Are you making an amendment?
Yes.
Clarify it, please.
We can clarify the language in one of the whereas and add a statement in the line of, "The intent of the board is to preserve and exclude said parts from the area or from any joint occupancy development project so that the community's continuous access to this recreational space is protected." Or, we can move forward with something that is a little bit more simple, but still makes the case that saying in sections four, five, and six, replace property with property excluding the Linda Vista part.
Hold on, hold on here. Let's gotta go through this.
There may be other people that want to preserve the park, but they're willing to pay for the park. So, by making that kind of amendment, you might be excluding us from getting revenue from the park. So, I mean, I don't recommend that amendment, but it's up to the board.
Point of information-
Doesn't mean that we're not going to keep the park.
Point of information, can you repeat that? I didn't fully understand what you just said.
So, by saying that we're gonna inclusively keep joint occupancy of the park, that means the district's taking responsibility to pay for the park. There may be an opportunity for us to keep the park and ground lease the park as part of the RFP. We have not developed the RFP. And I do want everyone here to know that part of our decision-making in going with joint occupancy is because we care about you as a community. And I don't, we didn't, you know, it's a lot of technical stuff. I don't know if you paid attention at the last board meeting, but we could have gone the other way, which we know without the cost analysis being public will generate more revenue for the district. But we heard you from the time you came to our facilities meeting about a year ago and said we would like you to do something with this property. And that, you know, opened the door for us. And then you had a meeting. And so, we are very thankful that you want to do something with this property. And we do want to reciprocate, you know, your wishes as well, because it's your community. So, what I'm saying is if we say that the joint occupancy is the park, it limits our ability to get revenue on the park. It doesn't mean that we don't believe the park is valuable. And that could be part of the RFP process. We haven't developed any criteria for RFP. This is just giving us permission to allow us to go to the next step and which would have a lot of engagement with the community as well as with the city. We did have consensus at the last meeting to move to this next step. So, we didn't get a request for any kind of analysis, but I do understand that Dr. Velazquez is bringing that up as maybe something the board wants additional information on as well.
So, now that we have the amendment here, are these comments about the amendment? Correct, thank you.
Clarify the amendment, please.
Hang on one second, just let her, what now? I am not either.
I understand, but should we see if there's anyone who wants a second?
I don't even know what the first amendment is.
Well, the gist of the amendment is to exclude the park in the now-therefore. And she's offered two different ways to word it. But the gist of what she wants is the same in both of them? So, the question is, is there a second for-
A second to that amendment?
All right, well, then we should clarify how it's going to be worded. But-
I understand that it's closed the park. But where in the resolution are we adding that?
In her simple version, she said in section four, five, and six.
Can I-
To change the wording where it says the property.
Okay, Ms. Bailey.
Can I respectfully ask the maker of the motion to postpone the amendment until such a time where we're at the point where we're asking or seeking RFPs? Because that's when this type of language is going to be most beneficial. I'm not certain that we're gonna get what we need out of putting this language in this particular resolution.
Ms. Kenny.
Well, so I think Dr. Velazquez has brought up a very good point, and Michelle's touching on it as well. So, I feel like we're giving with this vote tonight, authorizing staff to issue the RFP. I don't see anything here that says they will bring the RFP back to us so that we can look at what it says. And I'm assuming it will have some language to give developers an idea of what we want, unless it's just like, bring us whatever your, whatever idea you have. We're telling you nothing except we want some income and, you know. So, I don't know that we're leaving it that open-ended, so.
No, but I don't, I mean, first of all, we have the facilities committee, and then we have this board. And I don't think that the staff would ask for RFPs without going through the board for something like this.
Says right here that we're authorizing-
Point of order, there's a motion and a second.
We're fine.
So, I'm just trying to clarify if the RFP is coming back for approval or not. So, I don't know how to vote without that.
That would be a better amendment.
Well, we could request that. That doesn't even need to be an amendment.
No, I'm asking whether there was an intent to bring the RFP back to the board or for us to understand the language before it goes out. That's a question.
It's not in the resolution that that would happen.
Okay, thank you. And there would be some, your intent would be put some parameters in the RFP. It wouldn't just be totally, give us whatever you want.
Correct, but not so many parameters that we limit opportunities for developers to present ideas to potentially invest in the park.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. I didn't have something.
I take issue with that response because we have a precedent of a different resolution where we passed in support of, for example, Elliot. And we passed that earlier in the year. And it has been interpreted as the willingness of the board to move forward with all of this work, right? So, what that, what that makes me think is that somehow this resolution would be treated differently than that past resolution that we approved for the reconstruction or the rebuilding of Elliot, right? So, it makes me concerned that, I don't know, with certainty, what are the next steps of a resolution? Are they case by case? And then, it just makes me uncomfortable not to have some sort of indication about the value that we're gonna be placing on this particular part of the property via the park, because I don't feel comfortable that we have any guarantees other than this conversation, I suppose. I can make reference to this conversation and request that it be agendized, you know. But that is also at the discretion of, you know. So, it makes me uncomfortable to move this forward with the assumption that, and, you know, if the idea is we can table it, okay, we can table it and have a conversation with the city about their investment, their long-term investment in the park, and then redraft the resolution, if that is an alternative, right? Because from their comments, I can very well assume that that is a possibility and that we're willing to have that, if they're willing to have that conversation, if that's what concerns Dr. Velazquez.
Okay, hold on. We're gonna have Mr. Simon speak, and then the superintendent.
Just want to clarify what this resolution allows the district and staff to do and what it does not allow the district and staff to do. It does allow the district and staff to send an RFP out, to solicit and evaluate bids, as I've mentioned a few times tonight. It does not authorize the district and staff to enter into any development agreement of any kind. That must be approved by the board. I cannot, I could not approve, I cannot enter into that agreement even if I wanted to. It must come to the board. So, maybe I've done a poor job of explaining at the last board meeting and again tonight. This is a very early legally-required step in the exploration of developing of any property under joint occupancy. So, I just wanted to be clear on what it does and does not authorize, and what the board will be able to still see and vote on in the future.
Simon, I'm sorry. When you say that you would send the RFP out, are you asking developers who respond to the RFP to respond with a project? Or are you being specific in the types of projects that you want?
Well, there are going to be limitations. So, we have to balance all the different objectives. Generating revenue for our students, having a community use, which is required, and putting forward a project that will be approved by the city. And so, it would make little sense for us to have an RFP, to answer your question more specifically, that was so broad that it accepted projects that we knew would not meet any or all of those objectives. And so, it's not going to be so specific that it's we will only have developments of this size and this color and this shape. That wouldn't make sense, because we do want to meet the objective of generating necessary income for the benefit of our students. But developers know what will be approved by the city in Pasadena and specifically in this community. And so, as do we, from conversations with real estate professionals, with conversations with City of Pasadena planning. And so, there will be parameters in the RFP, but we need to strike a balance between trying to meet all those objectives that I mentioned.
And so, once those RFPs are received by whatever deadline you set, before any decision is made, you will take the opportunity then to bring that to the board, to the community, to the mayor, the city, whomever we need to bring that to, so that we can be informed on what was received and decide collectively what we want to see.
I think we can speak with the board about how that would play out, but yes, that is possible.
We're gonna have the superintendent speak next, and then Mr. Harden.
Let me just clarify that last answer, because I hear some- Sorry, can I just clarify that last statement? Because I've been, I'm hearing some chatter. There are certain topics, when it comes to active negotiations on real estate, that are confidential in nature. That is just the way it has to be, so it's not a lack of transparency. It's just there are certain things that are appropriate as a public entity to discuss publicly versus privately.
Mr. Harden.
Is there a middle or a compromise in process where, and what you just talked about in terms of the goals of this resolution, I personally have understood. And that gives you authorization to move forward. But in, before you go out for a call for RFPs, a set of design principles about the project, meaning, you know, we're gonna do the things, you know, it's got to include community use, revenue generation. It has to look at leveraging potentially existing structures or frameworks which would give the opportunity for the developer, whoever's submitting the proposal, to lean into preserving the park and designing a solution around that. We don't get hung up on that in this document. That set of design principles comes quickly before the board, and we approve that before you go out to RFP. So, I know it adds another step, but it gives some of the concerns that we're having here in the community about being, you know, that we're steamrolling over a process by which to get RFPs, that none of them may have any kind of protection for existing spaces.
So, I agree with, I- I agree with what you said about it not being, that the ROI that's being voted on tonight is not the right place for that. And I don't agree with the idea that we're steamrolling or strong-arming, as other board members mentioned, that's not-
We're about perception.
That's not, fair enough, fair enough. Design standards are overseen and implemented by the city, okay? They're the experts. That process already has in it substantial community engagement. And so, it's more appropriate for that to be overseen, required, implemented, through the process that we're already required to follow through the city.
Excuse me, ma'am, excuse me, excuse me. No, no, we can't do that here, ma'am, we can't do that. This is the board's meeting, ma'am. This is the board's meeting. I'm very, very, I appreciate your passion. This is the board's meeting, and we're all here to do the work of the entire district and every single child. Thank you very much. Okay, so that, I'm just trying to, hang on, hang on. Harden was done. Patrice, Ms. Patrice. No, there's a bunch of people. Yes?
Go ahead, Dr. Velazquez.
So, what I'm hearing is, we have the-
No, Mrs. Velaz, Dr. Velazquez, we have Patrice, we're gonna go in, we're gonna go in order here. This is super important. We got a room full of people. No, we're gonna, we're, seriously, please.
I apologize, somebody said that I, it was my-
Everybody, please, Ms. Velazquez, please. So, Ms. McKenzie can go, or Ms. Bailey can go, but we are going to not talk over each other right now. We're gonna go in order.
Since it's my turn, finally. Dr. Velazquez is on the phone. It is very difficult to do this remotely. I will allow her to rebut her comments, and then I will go after her, if that is okay.
I'm leaving.
Now, Ms. Madam President.
Yes.
I expect you to exhibit leadership. I have the purview to make that decision.
Dr. Velazquez, go ahead, please.
I sincerely apologize. It was not my intention to speak up over somebody. I thought that you had called me. Sorry, I, there's a delay, and I, again, I apologize. So, what I'm hearing is, we have the intention of listening to the community. We have the possibility of amending the document in the future. We want to take into consideration this. We are pursuing a joint use agreement because we've been listening to the community. So, then, if we're gonna, that's our intention in the future, then just why not clarify from the beginning in this particular document so that we can just move forward more efficiently? That's what I don't understand, right? So, I know that the motion had been seconded, and I think I figure out a way to keep it more simple. So, when the group is ready to hear it, then I will propose the language for my amendment.
Well, I do think it's my turn. I'm under the impression that the purpose of this resolution is to give direction to initiate a process, a process that has not yet begun. So, if our goal is just initiate a process, and once we give the authority to initiate said process, the first thing that would then follow is the development of an RFP. In that RFP, there will be parameters around what we are interested in, what kind of specifications we may or may not want to provide. And once those parameters come back, the board has to A, review them, and B, approve them. And in order for us to proceed any further, there is going to be community engagement in a number of steps and places along the process. Is that correct, Mr. Bravo Corini? Is that correct, Mr. Bravo Corini?
The next required step would be for the board to approve the exclusive negotiating agreement itself, not the RFP.
Okay.
I think the one part, and that's what I was trying to get at, that's missing that you mentioned, was that after the development of the RFP, that the board gets to look at that RFP and approve the stipulations contained within the RFP. That's not what you said was going to happen.
The board can request that, that is not what's in the resolution.
May we make the request that the board approves said RFP prior to it going out? Just so we can get peace out of confusion, just so that we can make sure that there are all minds and hearts clear on what is moving forward and so that people feel as though as the legally and duly authorized trustees that are responsible for said property, that we have done our due diligence. Is there agreement there?
I agree with that.
Thank you, friends.
Second, are you proposing an amendment to section six where it says authorize the staff to issue the RFP with board approval?
Well, I don't think, I don't think she can do that right now on top of the first.
Right, no. Can't do that right now because there's already a motion or, or a second amendment.
You can ask her, you can make a friendly amendment to that, but.
Pretty sure you can add a second.
I, let, I don't want to go down that rabbit hole just yet, but if I may finish my comments. So I, I think that we have certainly been clear about the desire, interest, and opportunity for there to be collaboration, for there to be community engagement, for us to engage in dialogue with our city parts, which we have to do because the design standards and whatever it is that is approved ultimately will have to be approved by the city. So there will be ongoing information, communication, and coordination. That is sort of built into what we innately have to do. I just want us to be clear about the fact that there is no intent to supersede communities' voice. There is no intent to proceed without community input. This merely is an initial step to initiate a process that will allow us to continue to engage in dialogue with you. And if we may have the purview to do our job and just say, yes, we want to do something, we can get to the point of coming to an agreement on the mechanics of how we incorporate the desires of this body to ensure that the parameters that we feel are important are included and the requisite next steps that are required to us by law are also honored and complied with. So just for another clarification, Mr. Bravo Corini, the document that you have brought forward, it does have language that has come to us by recommendation of counsel on how best to word this action for us to take. Is that correct?
Every word in the resolution is under the advice of counsel and everything that is included or not included is on the advice of counsel and the proposed process of what comes to the board was also under the advice of counsel.
Thank you. So since I only play a lawyer on TV sometimes, I don't want to manipulate counsel's words because I'm sure that we have paid good money for their advice on how best to proceed here. So with that, I would ask that we vote on the resolution as is and then allow staff to give us an opportunity to come back to us with a plan that shows us the requisite next steps for which there will be checkpoints and approval points for the board to be able to give our voice, to give our input, and to also include the necessary community engagement in the process.
Still a motion on the floor.
To clarify, it was offered as a friendly amendment. Did the original motion, motion maker accept it or was that, am I confused about whether it was friendly?
I didn't offer an amendment.
No, no, no. When Yarma, Dr. Velazquez, offered her friendly amendment, I thought she used the word friendly. Did the original motioner, which was Jennifer and Scott? No, 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 there was an original motion on the, way, way back at the beginning. And so when she offered it as friendly, did someone accept it? So it's not friendly, it's just a regular old amendment? When it's my turn, I have a.
So, thank you, Trustee McKenzie. The issue I have with, I know you're trying to reassure us that nothing happens unless the board approves it, and I asked this question prior to the meeting, I don't know which district staffer answered me, but there is something very special about this park and that's what is conveyed right now. Clearly, there's something special about this park. And if we issue a, or put out or ask for RFP, that doesn't say anything about the park or, there is a park there, but there's no language that we should treat that any special. And I, I had asked whether we can ask for proposals where it encompasses all of the five acres as well as a scenario where it's park intact, develop 2.5 of it, which is not the park. And the response was no, the idea is to develop the whole thing. So I'm, based on this feedback here, can we have an RFP criteria that asks for those two scenarios? One where we keep the park intact and one where the park is touched, basically, you know? So, I really want to give concession to the park. I mean, maybe that process that Trustee McKenzie has proposed will provide that, but I want to know, can we have that, you know, Plan A, Plan B? Because what will happen is if we don't say anything, the developer will just take that whole piece and they want the biggest canvas to deal with. That's the problem. We might get all these RFPs, but all of them will be the destruction of the park and we don't want that. We want other options with the park. So that, I would like a more inclusive process where the park is taken in consideration. And I want to ask my fellow board members, have you been to the site? Have you been to the park? Because I had the privilege of talking to a neighbor, Linda Vista neighbor, and I got a little tour of the park and I imagined as, when I had my little ones, what a special park that was. I could tell that if I, I could relate to, yes, right there, the mom's club. You know, you want that safety, you want to be able to stand anywhere in that park and that's a great park, you can see everywhere. Your, your toddlers just run around, you can see everywhere. It's clean, it's, there's grass, there's a pathway around the field, there's a great play structure. This is working for them. And in a, in a world, in a community where we are constantly divided, this brings this community together. I, I heard you, the business side of things, that all made sense to me too. You know, like where, public spaces is where so much diversity can come together. And for us to break that, there is something really wrong. So, again, I just want to ask for a more nuanced RFP criteria. I hope that this process that we're proposing will allow for that.
My, point of information, please.
I want to be clear that in my comments, I never said anything about not developing criteria for the RFP. That, for one, is clear. Two, the park can certainly be a part of any RFP, but we may have a proposal that comes back that creates park space that may not be in the exact location of where the park is located now, but as long as the same park space is represented, I don't know that we should put limitations on where the park is located on the property. Now, I'm a third generation person born in this community. I have been to Linda Vista, I have been to that school, I have been there several times. So this is not new information to me, new property to me. So, I'm clear about the community, clear about where it's located, but I also know that if you're going to build on property, you can build a park anywhere on that property.
There, there are ways.
I'm just, all I am saying is that we didn't say we're excluding the park. And so I want to be clear about the fact that the park will be a part of, there will, we want some open space and we want persons to be a part of whatever we ask developers to present to us, but we have not even gotten to the point of developing that criteria. So I want us to be clear about where we are in the process right now. And tonight, the action before us is to merely say we want to move forward. That is all we're asking permission to do.
Yeah, there, there are certainly opportunities to improve the park, to improve egress and ingress to the park. So, we certainly, I agree with you that we wouldn't want to preclude any development from making those kinds of improvements. I think I also, I just, I, we all know the park is well-loved. We all love, everybody loves the park, we love the park. And so, the, the line of questioning, I think, implicit in it is somehow there's a secret plan to get rid of the park. And I'm, I'm getting a little confused at, at how we've ended up here because this document does not say anything about getting rid of the park. It doesn't say the park will definitely be kept exactly the way it is for the reasons I explained a few times. And so, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be frustrated, we, every, the park is well-loved, the city loves the park, the community loves the park, the neighborhood loves the park, our own students who live in that community love the park. We, everybody loves the park, okay? So, but my job is to protect the district legally and financially. And everything that we've done, the way we've structured it is on the advice of counsel, it's not some shady, sneaky thing. It's all on the up and up. Other projects have proceeded in this exact way. ROI is the first step, exclusive negotiating agreement comes back to the board, the board can yea or nay it. If the board desires more involvement in between those two steps, of course, the board can require, can, can require staff to do so.
In looking at this decision, and I brought up some points last time about how this property was surplus, which I guess actually happened in 2006, which, you know, was a community process, there was a committee that met, oh gosh, it was a large number of times, I think I saw. So the property was surplus at that point and what I wanted to evaluate was whether doing this through joint occupancy, how that, the pros and cons of that versus keeping it surplus and just leasing the entire property. I don't know that we need a portion of it for our use. The joint occupancy does seem to be for district use. And I think we have other properties. I don't know that we would want to put, for instance, a professional development building way over there. And, and some of the reasons that I think are important is that I don't know that we want to be involved in the joint use and maintenance and operations of a site. Our goal is to, to maximize our revenue and I really am concerned about our staff capacity, especially with the aftermath of the fire and how much work that's causing that isn't terribly visible to the community, but it is really a big drain on staff time. And it's not going away anytime in the near future. So, we need to concentrate on educating students and I'm concerned that between staff housing and then continuing to have management and operations oversight of some joint part of this property. So, and I believe that we would be able to get a higher value out of it if we were leasing the entire property and not saying you need to develop a section of it for us, whether it's a building, whether it's some other space. So, and I know sometimes people say, well, you don't want to do surplusing because it's such a long project, process, but we've already surplus, we've already done that process in the past. So, that would be my, again, I, I don't know that I've really understood and I asked for more information about.
Can you bring us back to the motion that's on the floor?
I know, I'm replying to the motion. I'm, I'm replying to whether I'm going to vote and how I'm going to vote on this motion.
But I think she's trying to make an amendment to the resolution.
So I'm assuming there's going to be a vote at some time soon and I'm saying how I'm going to vote. That's what I'm talking about. And I'm going to vote no because I think we should not do a joint occupancy.
She hasn't even made the amendment.
The entire resolution is about doing joint occupancy. So, I'm done, thanks.
Student board member.
Hi, sorry, this is just me asking as myself, not representing the entire student body, but I just want to clarify. This is the very first step in this entire process based on what I've heard and what I've read on this action item. So, this isn't like a malicious thing that we're bringing forward to scrap the park, we're going to build something like huge in the area, you know, like, it's just the very beginning and this can be like revised along the way if it gets approved. Is that like correct from what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Okay, okay, just clarifying because I think there's some confusion here.
Anybody next? Dr. Velazquez.
Dr. Velazquez. What I am hearing is, we love the park, we respect the park, we want to engage in this process with the community, but let's do it later when, I, I don't know, I don't understand the, how, how the community's feelings are going to be magically more clear i- in a month than they are right now. Having said that, I am going to propose a substitute motion rather than an amendment. A substitute motion that includes different language for sentence, there, whereas number 10, where it says the property has been closed and vacated as district school site in the field area of the property is under joint use agreement with the City of Pasadena as marked area for residence. It is the intent of the board to preserve said park as recreational space.
So that's a motion, is there a second on that? Second? Going to take a vote on this? This is a vote on the amendment?
It is a vote on the substitute amendment, the one.
A substitute, okay.
If it fails, then we'll move to the original.
The original amendment.
And if it fails, then we'll move to the original.
Then we go to the original resolution. Yes.
The other two are dead. I'm sorry, I don't want to use that word, but.
I get it, all right, let's.
But didn't she, did she withdraw her first?
She has not withdrawn that.
The first one, she made a substitute to the first one. Can the substitute motion be repeated, please?
In line, line 10, where it says, whereas the property has been closed and vacated as a district school site, the field area of the property is under a joint use agreement with the City of Pasadena as a park residence, as a park area for residence. And the new part would be, it is the intent of the board to preserve said park as a recreational space.
So that's the amendment and we have a second from Trustee Fredericks, correct? Okay, so now, now we.
Clarification. So, doesn't it need to start with a whereas or was it part of a whereas already? Okay, thanks.
And her whereas is to maintain the current footprint of the park, not allow for recreational space in general?
Dr. Velazquez, just for clarity, can you please reread what your substitute amendment is?
Whereas the property has been closed and vacated as a district school site, the field area of the property is under a joint use agreement with the City of Pasadena as a park area for residence. Right? And that's where the existing language is. The new language would add, it is the intent of the board to preserve said park as a recreational space.
So keeping the exact. So keeping the exact part. Dr. Velasquez?
Yes.
Okay, so that's.
Sorry, Dr. Velasquez, can you repeat it one more for staff?
It is, so the added, okay, I'll read it all. Whereas, "The property has been closed and vacated as a district school site, the field area of the property is under a joint use agreement with the City of Pasadena as a park area for residence. It is the intent of the board to preserve said park as a recreational space."
Okay, we got it.
And we have the second.
Point of information, does that actually protect the park? Does that language protect the park? I'm asking our staff.
I don't think an intention protects anything. Because we're going to come back with the actual, you know, I mean, it's making a statement, right? That that's what you'd like to see developers come back with, but I don't think.
It's making a statement to staff about the board's intention, which would be reflected in our actions moving forward.
Yeah.
Dr. Velasquez, is that your intention? Is just to express an intention? Or did you mean to protect the park?
I do mean to protect the park. However, I am willing to need this board to make, I am willing to understand the intent that, I am needing, okay, let me organize my thoughts. It is my intent to protect the park, and I believe it is the intent of this community to preserve the park. However, in the good spirit of that both the neighbors are showing, I am willing to talk about the intent of the board, right? Because we've made repeated statements that this is the first process and that it is truly the intent of the board to revisit this decision and protect the park for future development. And so this is an olive branch to this particular body to give them the opportunity to clarify the intent while still giving you the flexibility to explore whatever options and go to have conversations with all the constituents and partners that you need to. So it is an attempt to compromise with this body.
Okay, so let's vote. We have the motion and the second.
Student board member, Aliwig.
I don't exactly understand, I'm sorry. Are we voting for the revised? I don't think I can vote on this because it's been revised and I don't have a student opinion. I think I have to abstain of this.
Rock call. Chad Harden?
No.
Kimberly Kenny?
No.
Chad Richardson Bailey?
No.
Patrice Marshall McKenzie?
No.
Dr. Jama Velasquez?
Yes.
Tina Fredericks?
Yes.
Jennifer Holy?
No.
Motion fails. Two to five. Motion fails.
Now we're going to go back to the first amendment, okay? And do we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
And then let's do the vote. Her first amendment.
This is where she was, she proposed to add, on section four, five, and six, after the war property, that we will add excluding the park on section four, five, and six, after the war property, we'll add excluding the park. Is that correct, Dr. Velasquez?
Yes.
So we have a motion and a second. Okay, vote.
Rock call. Student Aliwig?
I also don't think I can vote on this, so.
Chad Harden?
No.
Kimberly Kenny?
No.
Chad Richardson Bailey?
No.
Patrice Marshall McKenzie?
No.
Dr. Jama Velasquez?
Yeah.
Tina Fredericks?
Yes.
Jennifer Holy?
No.
Okay, motion fails, two to five.
So now we're going to the original resolution. Motion. We have a motion and a second. And now we're going to vote for this.
This is the original. So, student board member, Aliwig?
Yes.
Chad Harden?
Yes.
Kimberly Kenny?
No.
Chad Richardson Bailey?
Yes.
Patrice Marshall McKenzie?
Yes.
Dr. Jama Velasquez?
No.
Tina Fredericks?
Yes.
Jennifer Holy?
Yes.
Page six passes, five to.
Superintendent. Mr. Bravo, Mr. Bravo Krimi, I want to be very clear with our attorney here that the board has asked to see the RFP and approve the RFP. So I know they didn't write that in, but that is a direction that we have to keep in mind.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number one, action item, approval of. Yeah, we can take a five-minute break.
So, number one, approval of resolution. Yes, I am. 2833, resolution declaring emergency and authorizing the immediate repair of the AV broadcast system with Ms. Leyden.
Before we get into that, should we make a motion to extend the time?
Sure, make a motion. Give me a second.
It's made.
Okay, second.
Yeah, what's the time?
What's the time?
Till 11 o'clock.
Sounds good, second.
Student Board Member Addywick.
Oh, my God.
I know, I think I want to say it like that, too.
Oh, I'm leaving before then.
Rocco, Scott Harden?
I suppose, yes.
Himali Kenny? I don't think it's enough time to do everything, but sure.
Sheriff Richardson Bailey?
I guess so.
Under duress, but yes.
Dr. Yama Velazquez?
No.
Nina Fredericks?
Yes.
Jennifer Holley?
Yes.
We're standing until 11 o'clock, people.
Okay, number one. So here's 2833 with Beth Leyden. Thank you. Would it be okay to move one and two? For approval?
I would second that.
Sure. Did you really want to do a presentation, Beth? Okay.
But I can ask any questions if you'd like.
I don't have any.
Any questions? Basically, we just need to repair the broadcast equipment, and so this money is a gift from the city, which has already been approved by the board, so we'd just like to use it now and repair the system.
Would that be considered joint use?
No. Thank you.
So, motion, do we have a second? Okay, voting?
I have a question.
Okay, Dr. Velazquez.
The equipment that we're set to purchase, is it movable to a different location?
Theoretically, yes. It can be, it can be, it's going to be installed in the boardroom control room behind this wall, but it could be uninstalled and relocated. It's not a portable system, but it can be uninstalled and reinstalled in a new facility, yes.
Thanks, guys. I don't want to continue to invest in equipment that supports the argument that Hudson cannot be moved.
Okay, so, I'll go ahead with Rocco, and this is for Suite L1 and L2. Student Board Member Addywick?
Yes.
Scott Harden?
Yes.
Himali Kenny?
Yes.
Sheriff Richardson Bailey?
Yes.
Patrice Marshall McKenzie?
Yes.
Dr. Yama Velazquez?
Yes.
Yes.
Jennifer Holley?
Yes.
Okay, seven to zero. Thank you.
Approval of addendum for Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Sergio Canal.
I would move approval.
Second. I seconded Kim.
Okay.
Is there any questions?
Voting.
Student Board Member Addywick?
If I have a clarification on like why we voted the way that we did, do I just, okay. This is an abstain due to the fact that this directly deals with an employee's contract. We feel the issue should fall under human resources, which is an area that students aren't involved in. We recognize and appreciate the superintendent's leadership during times of crisis and continued support for student initiatives. We believe, yeah, we believe it's important to respect the boundaries of our roles as student representatives, so we abstain.
Can I ask Dr. Blanco, I know we got some clarification on student board member roles. The ed code language is a little obtuse, if you will, where it says that student board members can't vote on items under consideration enclosed. It just says something about closed in a kind of strange way, and it doesn't, doesn't necessarily say whether it's only items enclosed that can't be voted on by student board members, or if it's anything that's come to open after it has been considered enclosed, if you see what I mean. So I know that there's a perception that anything that's employee-related can't be voted on by students, but we have an employee section in consent, but I know you guys are voting on the entire consent, so I just, I don't know if we need to clarify precisely which things they're not allowed to vote on.
I would say we can, we can clarify that. Dr. Chanil, can you please work with Dr. Canal and clarify the question? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, Addy?
Abstain.
Okay, Rocco, Scott Harden?
Yes.
Himali Kenny?
Yes.
Sheriff Richardson Bailey?
Yes.
Patrice Marshall McKenzie?
Yes.
Dr. Yama Velazquez?
Yes.
Nina Fredericks?
Yes.
Jennifer Holley?
Yes.
Okay, seven to zero.
Number five, approval of education goals. So those are the goals that we set in the retreat, we have to vote on them. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any talk about this?
I have three things to clarify, because I wanted to understand, is it clear, well, am I understanding clearly, under English Language Arts, when we talk about the two subgroups, are we also measuring third graders? I wanted to confirm that we are, and is it clear enough without, do you feel, without saying it again?
You would like clarifying language in the subgroup category, saying third graders?
Well, see where it says additionally, there will be targeted increase for the following, could say third grade subgroups, do you see what I mean? So it doesn't have to be repeated on each line.
Understood. Do you want the same in mathematics?
Yeah, so I just want, I wanted to clarify, because I wasn't sure if, and then, on college and career readiness, I know I was the one who said, let's do the fourth, the four-year graduate cohort, and then when I went to the dashboard to see how easy that was to pull up, it's not there. So, A through G can be viewed as both the fourth and fifth year cohort, or just the fourth year cohort, but CCI cannot, so I don't think this thing exists in the public dashboard. I did ask, I did ask Google if it existed, and AI told me it did not after I looked for it, just in case it was hidden somewhere where I could just, so those are my two data points, saying I don't know that it exists, so I wasn't sure if we can call it out.
I believe that we pulled it by four year. We may need to, we may have done it through Ares, but through combining data, overlapping the data sets, but let me confirm that. If the case is that the public-facing dashboard combines them as four and five year, is your request to then update our goal to have that?
Yes, and the reason why, I will say that for A through G, I think four year is a better marker, because I don't know that most fifth year graduates are becoming A through G, so including them typically lowers our A through G rate, whereas with college and career readiness, I think they are, they are more likely to be on a pathway to being prepared. Do you see what I mean, in their fifth year?
Yeah, let me confirm that, and then I can, I confirm that.
Are you making a proposal to change the goal?
Well, I think Helen said she wants to check into it, if and it turns out that there is not a public-facing four-year graduate cohort, we would change it to what is public-facing, if that's.
There are consensus on this agreement that's being proposed.
I need, I will need an amendment if you are adding changes to the goals.
It's a conditional amendment.
Right, we have to vote if we're sending Helen off to investigate this and come back with information and change the goal if it's not public-facing.
So does that mean that we don't vote on these goals tonight and wait?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's small enough that it would just change that one sentence, or that one part of a sentence.
Okay, can you go over this again with me, why this, just explain it to me.
So, originally, when we were in the meeting, the retreat, I said, let's just do the four year cohort, but I really was thinking of A through G, where the four-year A through G rate is better than our fourth and fifth year students added together A through G rate, so I thought there was also a four-year only rate for CCI. When I went to the dashboard to look for it, I went, oh, I don't see it here, and so I don't think it exists, and I, I think it's because just doing it off of internal data probably is not as easy for the public to follow as doing it off something that they can go to the dashboard and see themselves. That's why I think we should change it to be the four and five year combined, if it turns out that that's all that's available. If it turns out I just couldn't find it on the dashboard that day, but it's really there, then I think the four year is fine to keep.
Does this make a huge difference?
I think the point that Mrs. Kenny is making is that she wanted your goals to be easily found by the public, like if they went to Data Quest or the dashboard, they would see the results easily, and I think what Dr. Chanil says, we might have pulled the information internally off of Ares. Another solution is just to add the four and five year cohort and fix the goal now, because we know that's available.
I'd like to do that.
Okay.
I think that's fine.
So amend it to say, under college and career readiness, the CCI, the college and career indicator, CCI, for the four and five year combined graduate cohort.
Is that friendly amendment?
Yeah, I'm trying to be friendly.
May I share, sorry, may I share an update that actually could be relieved? The percentage that we used are from the public-facing dashboard, they are the combined cohort, so they're already the four and five year. We did have to do the internal poll, we do have the four year, but I forgot to replace some numbers, and that's my, my fault, so it works out, we'll just add the statement and five-year cohort.
And then we'll also.
Do you know what you're changing?
I understand the change on the CCI, I'd like to confirm the change on the other two goals, the after grade, no?
No.
So in between where it says following subgroups, we were just going to say following third grade subgroups under ELA. Is that necessary? I don't, I just want to, I read this and I was like, it says following subgroups, African-American, and I'm like, is it again just for the eighth graders, or is it the entire African-American subgroup?
It's for third grade, it says third grade in the first sentence.
Okay.
We're still talking about the same set of third graders.
Okay, if people feel it's clear enough.
I feel it's clear.
My point of clarification was not on the third grade, but I thought we had agreed that 65 was the goal for both subgroups, or did I make that up in my head?
I just want to clarify that I'm waiting for a turn, but.
Oh, she's waiting for a turn.
Okay, yes, yes.
I have Dr. Velazquez.
Yeah, I am so confused, because I left that meeting thinking that our math goals had benchmarks for both fifth grade and eighth grade, and I don't know where in the process I, I got so lost, because this one only talks about eighth grade, so I just wanted to see if, like, how, when was it that I lost, how was it that I left thinking that we had established fifth and eighth, and we only have eight?
To Patrice's question, it was 60-60 for the two subgroups under math, from the, but 60-65 for ELA. To Dr. Velazquez's question, it's hard to see, fifth grade is up here, but then grade is crossed off with that whole sentence, and it does say eighth down at the bottom, and for math. So, hard to say, unless someone remembers that evening, for me, I don't have a good memory.
Our recollection, we are only two of the whole group that were there, we know that there was spirited discussion in two separate groups and a consensus building with everyone, so understandably, we also had to verify and cross-check some things. Our recollection is that it was both fifth and eighth grade that we were going to measure, and our recollection was that both subgroups had the same target.
I think our group had initially said that, but then the other group came in, they added the fifth grade, and we just accepted it, but my original intention was only eighth grade, but I, I left with the impression that we had established benchmarks for both fifth and eighth.
That is our recollection also.
If, if we want to make this change, do we have the baseline for the fifth, Helen?
Yes. Like right now, hold on. Yes, I can get it for you.
We're waiting for someone to make a motion to change it, but if you want to change it to fifth and eighth, then we need the baseline for fifth.
Move to amend the math goal to add fifth grade.
Second.
With the same.
We're having, have two amendments now?
Okay, sorry, whoever made the other amendment.
Second amendment, she's the first amendment.
I'll just modify your amendment. Okay, so, and mine is also friendly, on top of your friendly?
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to make a friendly amendment to add fifth grade to the math goal, with the, whatever the baseline is, for African, American, and Hispanic Latino, and then with the goal of 60% as well. Sixty, same?
But now, if we're having both fifth and eighth in the same math goal, we do need to clarify if the subgroups are only for eighth, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I, so.
You have a baseline?
No, because I realized to be consistent, we pulled the data from SERs, because it's preliminary, so I don't have the, SERs access is over there, and so I will need to have my data administrator pull that tomorrow, so if you trust me, I will pull from the exact same data source and file that we pulled the eighth grade data. So I don't have the, SERs access is over there, and so I will need to have my data administrator pull that tomorrow. So if you trust me, I will pull from the exact same data source and file that we pulled the eighth-grade data. And I will insert it and update you.
Yep.
Okay.
That works. So was there, before I made an amendment, or a motion to change it, was there original motion and second?
Yes. I had original motion to approve Ms. Fredericks, and then second, Ms. Harden.
Okay, and you guys are accepting our friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking.
So we're doing two friendly amendments? Technically, okay, just let me clarify, so I can get it right for the minute. So the first change that I understood is, we are going to change the CCI to add fourth and fifth year, right? Now, the second change?
Combine.
Combine, okay, combine. And then the second change will be only on the math goal?
Yes.
So on the math goal, we're going to add fifth grade, and we're going to change the percentage on eighth-grade students to 60% or 65%?
I think we're leaving that the same.
Okay.
Dr. Hill's going to look up the baseline for the fifth grade, and the target for fifth grade was what, though?
That's my question, was, we didn't have a target for fifth-grade set.
Because on the, it says 70 for fifth grade.
What I do?
I could go with 70 for fifth grade.
No, no, no.
But it's going to be to 70% as the target for fifth-grade math.
For both students, even though you don't know the baseline?
Yes.
Okay.
Because fifth grade is higher than eighth grade. Pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that eighth grade...
So fifth grade is going to be 70%, and eighth grade stays the same. Okay, got it. And then Helen will give me the baseline for fifth grade. Okay, so it will get posted sometime soon.
And then we're going to say, for the following eighth-grade subgroups, on the math only, so that it's clear that those two subgroups are for eighth.
Subgroups are only for eighth grade?
And fifth grade, but you want us to put the language?
I was thinking we were going to just keep the subgroups for eighth, because actually, from the charts, that's, the subgroups were only under the eighth-grade part and not under the fifth-grade part?
At which, okay.
On this screen. This is true. I'm just saying to Helen that we have these screenshots of the two different groups, the top and the bottom, and then we kind of, and it's hard to tell now, looking at this...
Okay, but what did you want through the eighth-grade levels?
I was thinking that we were leaving the subgroups as just eighth grade, but if that's not the will of the board, then...
You don't want me to mumble? So we're adding fifth grade, and we're having 70% as the goal?
For overall, all of fifth grade, and then we have an overall, all of eighth grade, and then, if the subgroups are only for eighth grade, I just want to mark them as such, so that it's not confusing when people read it, since we now have two different grade levels in the main part. And those baselines are for eighth, the ones that are already here.
Can Dr. Hill just take this and bring it back, what?
Can you repeat that, Dr. Velazquez? We couldn't hear you.
That, I think that the wording on this needs significant changes, and although we, well, I trust Dr. Hill, is the changes are significant enough that, I mean, I think that we, we don't like to agree on intentions, but we could agree on an intention and leave the final wording to the next meeting.
11th is our next meeting. Can we just table until the 11th?
So postpone? That will be a new motion, postpone?
Oh, I moved to table until September 11th, so that we can postpone, so that we can have final language inserted.
So postpone first, Scott Harden, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second, Ms. McKenzie, all right, so...
But Dr. Hill will be here. I just want to make sure that I have consensus on that we're not having subgroups for fifth grade. Is that what we all just agreed upon?
We're going to add the subgroups.
Well, that's why I'm trying to make sure that we're all thinking the same thing. So we're going to make it exactly like the eighth grade, but at different numbers, because the numbers will be a little different. And we're increasing to 70% for all the subgroups. Okay, got that?
May I, for math, read to you what I think it's supposed to be, and then you tell me where, what I missed. By June 2028, the percentage of fifth-grade students and eighth-grade students, respectively, who are advanced or proficient in mathematics, will increase from a baseline of X for fifth grade to 70% in, I'll put in the school years, and 30% for eighth grade to 60%, as measured by the CASP test. Additionally, there will be targeted increases for the following subgroups. In eighth grade only, so you do not want me to do subgroups for fifth grade?
I wanted subgroups.
So yes, subgroups for fifth grade?
Yes.
Okay, same subgroups. And then the targets for those subgroups, have you set those?
Probably 70.
So 70 for the subgroup as well? Okay. Okay, can I now ask a clarifying question for ELA, then? So for ELA, did you, I heard one statement, that the targets should be the same for both subgroups. They're currently different.
It's not what we originally put in, because we were looking at their baselines. So I think we were, you know, so...
I'll live with ELA as is.
Yeah.
Okay. And you are, okay, and you are comfortable with their, the subgroup targets to be different than the whole population target? Because in math, they're the same. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. We're voting on the postpone.
So he said postpone so that she can put all of that language in writing and get us all the baselines and bring it back as a complete package.
On, on the 11th.
Yes, on the 11th.
All right, it's fine.
So you don't see that as a problem, as far as delaying the work of the staff, if the goals aren't set today? Does it make a difference?
No. We are operating already. We have goals, we're still always working.
Okay. Well, I mean, okay.
No, thank you, we are, don't worry, we are, we're working on them already.
And if Dr., and if Dr. Blanco's not here on the 11th, we'll just change notes.
Dr. Hill's still going to be here.
Okay, so we're voting on the postpone, to September 11, yes. Addy Wick?
I have to abstain, but do you want me to read out the original, like, student consensus, consensus about like the, like, before it was revised? Okay, okay.
That's interesting.
Originally, after looking over, we were going to vote no. While we do value the board's ambition to improve academic outcomes and college readiness, we felt that the goals were unrealistic based off of past statistics. As students, we want everybody in the district to thrive, but we'd like to do so by setting more realistic goals that are achievable in that amount of time. And the expectations that are outlined don't exactly show a clear plan, at least to us, which can put pressure on students and staff, but we also want to reiterate, this doesn't mean that we don't support student growth and achievement, we just want to make the goals clearer and more practical.
Did you all have any recommendations?
We didn't come up with any, and I don't have any right now. It was kind of just like what we read over and what we talked about at a student meeting. We just felt that there weren't really, like, any clear plans for teachers to meet these goals, which we felt can put a big strain on classrooms, especially if there's not really, like, a clear plan outlined by the district. So that's why we were going to...
Sounds like you guys need to be up here. Great job, thank you.
Okay, so, Rockoff, Scott Harden?
Yes.
Kimberly Kenny?
Yes.
Ms. Charis Johnson Bailey?
Yes.
Patricia Marshall McKenzie?
Yes.
Dr. Germa Velazquez?
Yes.
That wasn't yes. Tina Frederick?
Yes.
Jennifer Holly?
Yes.
Okay, 7-0, postpone to September 11, we change.
Okay, great. So, next one, board discussion on the governance handbook. So we delivered our draft to everyone. We got feedback from one board member. At our next meeting, next month, September, we are going to go over those suggestions. So if anybody else has suggestions, I would send them in. It's a little late for us to have, like, a huge discussion, unless you feel the need. I don't, but you can go through it and read it, and this is one thing to really keep in mind, we can add and subtract from this next year. You know, this is a document that goes, it's not, the world's not going to end if you don't have everything, you know, right now, today. It's just not. So it moves and changes, but it will live on the web in the board area near the protocols. And this is something, so as you look at it, that what districts do with these governance handbooks, it's also something that's easily readable by the community, and we sign this, it's an agreement with each other, and that we sign. So we were going to, our plan as a committee, Ms. Fredericks and Mr. Harden and I, we're going to bring this back at the end of September for the regular meeting, for finalizing. So there is time to go through this and add, or take something out. So it's just a discussion. Does anybody have anything? Bye, Ms. Wick.
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
So if someone wants to add, then they just bring it at the next meeting and we would, in real time, be adding it?
Well, we kind of want people, so Ms. Kenny centers in right away, so that really helps us to look at it. So if you want to send, I mean, we've got, you know, I don't know, a week and a half or something, but, you know, we, we're capable of doing that. I, I don't see, I mean, I thought her suggestions were, you know, fine, it's, yes, Mr. Harden?
Yeah, I would, I would, just for the efficiency of time, if you look at what's been attached to the agenda and have any strike-throughs or edits, then we, if we can work with them in committee and then bring back the proposed draft at the next meeting, I think that would be, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we'll have time. All right, okay, great. Okay, board committee reports, does anybody have one? Oh, hi, Ms. Kenny, sorry.
That's okay. We are having a policy meeting on September 4th, and I sent an email to everyone, because CSBA is doing some work and preparing materials to help boards with developing and keeping their policies current. And so they are piloting them, and they asked if our district wanted to be part of a pilot. It means a four-hour meeting, and they gave us some dates, and it would be reviewing the materials and then giving our opinions on them, and then doing a debrief. They facilitated, it's virtual, I mean, I assume, we, I guess we could all do it from home. I guess we don't have to gather together. So I just wasn't sure, so the dates that, I already eliminated some of the dates, because we have a study session on one of them and something, I can't remember what was happening on the other one. The four that I put in the email were Tuesday 10/7, which also happens to be AAPC, Wednesday the 8th, which will now be an Sback meeting, Friday the 10th, which was during the day, and I know that may not be convenient for people who work, and then 10/15, which is also a Wednesday, which means it's also another superintendent's budget advisory committee. So I'm, I think if we have three or more people who are interested in this, I don't know that they just want a couple people, they want, you know, there to be some, yeah, some discussion between board members about this. And so the 7th, the 8th?
Of October.
Of October, sorry, October 7th, October 8th, October 15th, and I think it was, what'd I say, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m.? And then the 10th was, I think, 10:00 to 2:00. It was a daytime option, Friday, Friday of October 10th. And so it's a virtual, so I think we can all do it from wherever we are. I don't know that we have to gather in one place.
The 10th is the best day for me, and I'd be willing to do it on the 10th.
Okay.
I can make the 10th work.
I mean, it can be more than three, it doesn't have to be limited, that's what I'm saying.
All of us?
It could be all of us. I, I was like, I don't know that I can get seven board members to agree to four hours in the month of October, but, so, as many as of us who want to do it.
Can we get a calendar, anybody?
Sure. But I need to tell them tomorrow that our district is interested, and maybe I'll say, you know, there's at least...
You have at least three.
Three of us.
We, we heard you, Dr. Velazquez.
It was, yeah, she wasn't...
I want to say that it's from 10:00 to 2:00 on that date, but I would have to find the email I sent, or someone's reply.
And you said it's on Friday, from when to when? Oh, you're looking at it.
You replied to me most... So Friday, October 10th, I'm sorry, from 11, it says 11:00 to 2:00.
Okay.
But that is three hours, so I'm going to have to confirm with them what hours they really meant, because the other three dates are for four hours. Maybe they think we're more efficient in the daytime.
What are you doing there? The other days are what time?
So I'm going to reply that at least three of us are ready on the 10th, and we'll send a calendar invite.
Is it the first date?
The other dates are all in the evening from 4:00 to 8:00.
I know, but what were the dates?
7th, 8th, and 15th of October. But I think we, we need to be as a group, because I think they're going to meet with us as a body, or a group of a body. So...
Oh, so that means we don't come the other day?
Right, we just have to do it once. It's just one...
Oh, okay.
And again, they've given us the times, unless I've written them down wrong, as 11:00 to 2:00, but I could have transcribed that incorrectly. It's either 10:00 to 2:00, or 11:00 to 2:00, and I will double-check and...
It's 11:00 to 2:00, yeah.
Yeah, but I think I typed that.
Oh.
Or maybe I copied that, I'm not sure.
We'll, we'll verify the time, but...
So thank you, and want to let us, and I will communicate with you, and we will send out an email. Thank you.
Thanks, Cam.
So are there any other board committee reports? Nothing else? Is that it? All right. So on to the big, exciting stuff, consent agenda. How are we going to move through this one? That's what we're waiting for. Are there any, do we have any polls? No, but I don't have any.
I don't. What? Do we have any polls?
All right, Patrice does not, I don't.
Move, does she have polls?
So, sorry, if I can have a final poll?
Move approval on consent agenda.
Second.
All right.
I do have comments, though, on some of the items, if that's okay. So on the consultant contracts, there were two... So, on the consultant contracts, there were two items for first aid training, and they're coming from Fund 67, but the pot of money that goes to Fund 67.0 is coming from general fund. It's LCFF base. And so, my question that I don't think I saw the answer to is, are those part of the funds that we will be reviewing when we're doing budget reductions? Will they be included? Because it's almost a million dollars that we send over there of unrestricted funds.
The million dollars is to pay for claims out of that fund, the self-insurance fund 67.0. And so, that is the source of revenue for that fund. There are expenditures of a similar amount, and so, that would not be...
So, it's contracts, though. It's not just claims, is it?
It's, that's, the object that we use is contracts, even though it's for settlements and things of that nature, because of just the way that they get paid.
But we do, I mean, I saw that it said that we do it at the end of the year, but we actually transfer it at the beginning of the year. It's built into the budget to transfer that amount of money?
Yeah, it's, yes.
And several years ago, it was only $250,000, but now it's almost a million? And this is from property and liability claims, not workman's comp?
Correct.
It could be partly, we could think about ways to reduce this expenditure.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get. I just want to make sure part of the thinking as we're moving...
That's, that's a good way to...
Excellent. On purchase orders, I just wanted to reflect that two of these were written into PHS's school plan, because I checked. They're buying furniture, science tables, and wave tables and chairs. And they've written into their site plan, and they're using supplemental and concentration LCFF funds, because this is going to improve learning. And I, it made me a little uncomfortable to use S and C money to buy furniture. So, I don't, I, I'm not saying it's not meeting our educational master plan, and maybe it will engage students to the extent where academic achievement improves, I don't know. But it was $35,000, so it's a chunk. So, anyway, I wanted to reflect on that. On the, we're approving the architects for Altadena, and including, included in the RFP, we wrote, was that we're going to be partnering with Jobson Foundation, but we don't have the agreement with Jobson yet. And so, I just was like, is that the right order? I mean, I understand, like, we're, we're telling the architects, you will be working with these people, but we just don't have an agree with them yet. We haven't seen it, so I just wanted to reflect that. And then, on the minimum wage, I just wanted to make sure that we're working with school sites who may be employing project aides out of their site money, either their site council money or their unrestricted site money. And this minimum wage may or may not already be in their budget, and I just wanted to make sure that we're cognizant of that and helping them out with that. Because I know sometimes when we do these raises, either retroactively or kind of after budgets have been planned...
Yes.
...there's problems.
Ms. Patrice.
I have one brief comment, and that is to say thank you to PUSD for continuing to invest in water safety for our young people.
That was very nice. Okay. So, where are we here? Public comment? Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. What are we voting on again? Okay.
Yes.
Kimberly Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson Bailey?
Yes.
Patrice Marshall Mackenzie?
Yes.
Dr. Germa Velazquez?
Yes.
Tina Frederick?
Yes.
Jennifer Holley?
Yes.
Special 7-0.
Okay, that's amazing. Oh, yes, superintendent has something to say, then we're going to go to public comment.
So, I just want to say, this is my last meeting with Mr. Bravo Karimi and the board. Not my last meeting with the board, but with Mr. Bravo Karimi, and I wanted to publicly thank him for his service to PUSD. And he's going to be here with you in my absence, giving you the unaudited actuals, but he's been a great member of our team and brought so much to our school district, and I really appreciate all of your knowledge, and I'm sure we'll still call you up and ask you questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, okay, so we do have a public comment here.
Rachel X. Broad. Bring it home, bring it home.
You're leaving? This is not part of my three minutes. What? What? Wait, you talked... Hi. I, what? What? Um, I just wanted to...
Was that funky, it was, it was funky called Medina, Cold Medina, right? That you played on your phone?
I'm finding my job on the 30 arts expert.
Uh-huh. Okay, sure. I just, I apologize, I think I filled out the card wrong. This feels a little disjointed. I wanted to talk earlier when we were presenting on special ed stuff. I wanted to thank PUSD very much, because I, my social circle is mainly special needs families. And I know folks who are in SDCs, who are in embedded classrooms, who are in gen ed with AIDS. There were a few hirings of special education teachers, and they have been outstanding. Everyone was so nervous about getting a new teacher with their special needs kids, and they are so happy with them. So, thank you very, very much for that. I just want to let, I just want to emphasize another portion of gratitude to this board tonight for really supporting the CAC. I really, really appreciate you guys doing that. We are a very, we hope to, we hope everyone feels like we are a very thoughtful group. For those of you who have been to our meetings, and we hope that all of you can be, can come to our meetings this year, because all of you represent schools that have kids with IEPs. We're, we're a lovely group of people, and the board specifically put in a lot of effort to our presentation in June. And we appreciate the push from this board for us to get a written response to those recommendations. I was, there were women who came here and cried about communication logs, and all summer they asked me, what are next steps, what's happening? And I've got nothing to tell them. And after my meeting on Monday with special ed department, I have nothing to tell them. Lastly, regarding inclusion, I don't know if the teachers have an option to opt out. A lot of us are still haunted by the teachers who came and spoke about being in embedded classrooms from last year, especially when one staff member actually did impersonations of the noises that she would hear in her classrooms from special needs children. So, we want to make sure that if we do have gen ed teachers in there, that they want to be there. It shouldn't, it should be a choice, because when you become a teacher, you deliberately choose whether or not you're going to learn about special ed or not. And if you choose not to, it doesn't make you a bad person, but it makes you someone who wants to teach general ed and general ed only. So, we would like to feel that our children are in very welcoming environments. So, please allow for an opt-out. We do not want teachers in there if they don't want to be there. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
All right. So, okay, last two things. Any board requests? Yes, Ms. Kenny? And Dr. Velazquez, next.
In, in talking with, in talking with Dr. Blanco earlier this week, I was reflecting on the fact that a lot of back-to-school nights happened this week, and I don't know whether there may still be some teacher changes. And I know back when my kids were in elementary, it happened to me where I went to a back-to-school night, I met my student's teacher, and the next week they had a different teacher, and I was very sad. And so, what I'm kind of asking for is that there be a consult, that the board somehow gets some consultation prior to the negotiations with the union around the calendar, so that we can express when, so before the calendar is put into stone, you know, and we, it only comes to us for approval at a board meeting, that we've had some input. So, I just want to, somehow we're in the process, and since, I think they do that in the January timeframe, I can't remember. It's written into the contract when they do the calendar, just that we have, are allowed to have some input so that, I don't want to say it now and then have everyone forget by the time this happens, so.
Dr. Velazquez.
Go ahead, Dr. Velazquez.
Right, I have some concerns about process, because I've been getting conflicting messages about how to move forward. Specifically, I am interested in issues of safety for students and for our mixed status families in all of our campuses. At our June, at our last June meeting, the district made the case that we were ready in a motion requesting that the, the, the district would engage in a plan for safety that included a proper incorporation or integration of accessibility for parents, families that can no longer freely move through our city. So, all of these things that include accommodations and safety were already addressed, and there was no need. It was also explained at that meeting that there was no need for, to, to grant the superintendent a special permit to act with immediacy in the case that conditions that impact student safety change and would require the district to make changes or provisions or whatnot. Fast forward to the last couple of days, where I keep bringing up the same issues of safety for our students and community that have not yet been addressed, and the response was, you need to request a formal agenda item. So, I'm really confused, because either we are dealing with sensitive confidential matters that you're not, you know, that have to be treated with sensitivity, or I have to request a formal agenda item to address this. So, I need some guidance on how to move forward so that then we can make a decision.
I think you were referring to the building of a fence, and that at that time, when I responded, was because a lot of processes have to happen to build a fence. But Mr. Dunning indicated that he had a proposal, was taking it to facilities, and then it could come to the full board, and I thought I responded to you and let you know that that was what was going to happen. In terms of some of the other requests about access, some of the items, if we ask our teachers to do hybrid, it's in their contract that they don't do hybrid, so that would have to be, like, negotiated with them, or if they want to do something of their own free will, we don't stop them from using equipment that they have in any way they would like to. But we can't mandate that to them. I didn't get a chance to check in with Dr. Canal today to see if that's something that we could even open up negotiations about. But we will, you know, highly encourage the parent groups to have their meetings in hybrid and give them access to, you know, the tools that they need to be able to do that, like web exports and things like that. So, we're a little constrained with directing educators to do that, but we will make sure that all packages from back-to-school nights are delivered to the families either through mail or through their children, if their children are coming to school that we're not able to attend. Are there any other areas that I have not covered?
Well, so, the last communication I received was that I did have to request a formal agenda item for the fence. So, is, is, does this constitute as the formal request, or...
After I responded with that, I checked with Mr. Dunning, and it was moving forward to facilities. So, there, it was already in process to bring it for facilities a proposal for approval, and then if facilities approves it, it will come to the full board. But it is a DSA project, so that's why I said that we had to ask the full board. But he already got the proposal by the time that I had told you that, and I thought I sent you another email explaining that he was going to bring it to the facilities committee. But it would still take the same amount of time because of the DSA approval piece. So, we put up a temporary...
Right, and accommodations, I believe that while a negotiation with our bargaining partners is one part of ensuring equity and access for all families, it is not the only solution to this particular situation. And so, will the, this, do I need to request an agenda item for the district to assess accommodations based on the current negotiated agreement? Or is there something that is in progress already?
The graduations are already recorded. What I wasn't sure on is if they were recorded live when they're happening or if they show them later, so parents could view graduations and promotions as well. Graduations will be available, and then you did make a suggestion to ask administrators to do some of the hybrid things, and I did relay that to Dr. Chenhill, but we haven't had a chance to talk about whether that was in agreement with Dr. Malone or not. I, that was another request that Dr. Velazquez made, was if teachers couldn't do it, that principals and other administrators could do it.
So, I need a point of clarity on that. When a request like that comes to you, is that something that does not have to be something that is agreed to by the full board or receive the consensus of the board? Because after all, what those types of things is doing is adding to your workload, and is it something that aligns with our goals? So, I think what I'm getting at is whether or not it is appropriate for something outside of the goals that we've established for board members to come to you and make the request and expect that it happens without bringing it to the full board for consideration.
But I think Dr. Velazquez is clarifying she thought that these types of things were agreed on in June, or that were, that could be done by the superintendent without the board needing to be involved. And so, she's now asking...
At what board meeting did we...
On the June 30th, when we had a discussion about immigration.
Oh, this is regarding immigration?
Parents who don't feel comfortable coming to schools. So, what she's now asking is, is that, was she under a misapprehension in thinking that at that meeting, the superintendent says, I have all the approval I need from the board to do all the different things that might make families feel more comfortable? So, Dr. Velazquez is saying, does that now need to come back to the board to make these types of requests?
Well, and I absolutely think that even if you're considering something like that, I understand that it's for impacted families, but you have to make sure that there's access to other families to receive the same at the same time. So, I think it's, I think it's a bigger picture than...
I think it's a matter of interpretation of what access is, right? So, when I'm saying that we're going to send parents written documents and materials home, and that the principals have been instructed at the July 29th meeting to make sure that every student that's not in attendance, I mean, parent that's not in attendance, that their materials go home through the student or through the mail, that's access, right? I think Dr. Velazquez is asking for a different kind of access, and if something costs money or, you know, with something negotiated, it probably does have to come back to the board. So, I think it's a, maybe interpretation of what we felt was in place and ready, and maybe what she would like to see additional things in place. If it's very... If it's very specific, you know, using technology or something that we don't have in place that's going to, you know, take time and money, probably best for you all to weigh in on it.
Well, it sounds like we have, it sounds like, from what I was hearing, we, it's not that we don't have it. It's that it's being asked, and it's additional. And again, now that I understand what it's for, I still want to make sure that other student groups are included in receiving the same, at the same time.
Yep, you could not identify who is or who is not. I, I just want to clarify what the process is for such inquiries because it seems to me that I, I am not clear about what the process is. It, it was indicated that, no, there's no process, and then there is no, no, yes, there is a process. So I just want to have a clear path forward. What is the process? Do I have to request these things as agenda item?
I think for transparency, I think it should come to the board. So there's two things. I know we sit in these meetings, and at the end, when we get to the part of the agenda where the board can add other agenda items or make other comments, it may not be something that has occurred at that time. It may be something that happens after the meeting, which it's why it's important that you communicate with the board president for things that you want, and the superintendent, for things that you, you want on the agenda. When, my concern is that when we make requests for things to get done, that the superintendent, then, in all of her readiness to support the board, even the board as the individual board members, things don't get said to the full board, and then things are happening, and then we're told that a board member requested. I think that is not transparent. And I also am always concerned as to whether or not it aligns with our goals when we start asking for extra whatever. And I know generally it's to benefit the students, but especially if something does, is not something that's part of our goals, we need to make sure we run it by the full board for approval. And we need to really examine the, the weight that we're putting on staff when we make these requests.
Okay, anybody else? I'm looking around, looking around. Okay, so I think we're ready to adjourn, then. Is everybody comfortable with that process right now?
I just want to make a request to the superintendent that you don't back away from bringing things forward to this full board. There, you got seven of us up here, and we're all coming at you with different wants, different desires, different needs. I'm not saying that any of them should take precedence over another, but I do think that it is important for all lines to be open and transparent up here. And I think that what she's saying is important and should be considered. And when one of us requests that something be placed on the board, I'm sorry, on the agenda, I mean, you can be the judge as to whether or not that's necessary. But if you feel that, you know, it's, it's adding additional work to your staff, and it's something that's above and beyond your goals, or the board, what the board has asked for, I think you need to bring it to the board. And so that way, everyone is clear. When you can answer her right away, I'll take care of it, or I think we need to put it on the agenda. I mean, but there needs to be some kind of transparency, because too often, you know, we're getting the response that a board member requested it.
I, I, I just want to be clear. I am trying to advocate for equitable access and participation of the parent community in our school. That is consistent with our goal. I am advocating with this, and I am sure that you are in solidarity with me because most of the constituents that I am advocating for are part of your district. So I know that we are together in this particular mission. And so what I want is to request an agenda item that addresses a plan for equitable access and inclusion of parent participation of all groups, engaged groups in our parent community. That is what I'm requesting. And I'm sure that I come with your support because this impacts disproportionately all the families in your community.
Just to be clear, this entire community is my community, and all of the families in this community, in this school district, is represented by me. And I hope every one of us sitting here, I don't see them as separate. And I absolutely agree with you, and I know that you represent what you represent as far as our families and our students go. I'm just wanting to make sure that we come up with a transparent, and this is one of those things that I harp on, systems. But we need to come up with a way to make sure that we're all getting things put on the agenda the same way, that when we go to the superintendent, she has a clear process for determining what she needs to bring to the board and what she can deal with directly. It still needs to be communicated. I don't feel comfortable when I have to say.
If that process is to request it during this meeting, I am making that official request.
Okay. So does the board need to come up with the system, or do you have a, you, how do you want to do?
I just want to be clear, I'm, I'm, Dr. Velazquez, because you're asking for access through technology, right? Not just written communication.
That's where she needs to start.
Is she gone? Did she? Yeah.
Do you hear the question from Dr. Blanco?
Can she repeat it, please?
Just want to be clear on the exact request, what you want to put on the agenda.
At this point, because there is more than 10 days ahead of the next board meeting, I'll just put it in writing.
I mean, that sounds fair. Sounds good. Okay. All right. So are we ready?